For the Wednesday, September 16th, 2020, public meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. And I'll start off by reading this notice. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2 and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchba.gov/pc and on FTC TV, which is Channel 11 on Cox, Channel 2 on R10, and Channel 35 on Verizon. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing. Please submit those comments via email to planfallschurchba.gov. And then I'm going to use this as a chance to give a quick reminder to my fellow commissioners. Please make sure you have muted yourself unless you plan to talk. This will help us avoid technical problems with echo and make it easier for everybody to hear whoever is speaking. During the discussions, I will use your mute status as an indication that you have commented. So if you don't have a comment, stay muted, and I won't call on you. And with that out of the way, Mr. Bazemore, can you please call the roll? Here.
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 All right, thank you. With that out of the way, I would like a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Right, motion for Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Wood. Just a quick vote, roll call, please, Ms. Bazemore?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. You're muted, Andy.
Hey, look at that, I'm muted. Anyway, before we get started, I want to welcome Jordan Hicks to the meeting. Jordan is the Chair of the Housing Commission and is joining us for the Speaker Series with Jenny Schutze. Jordan, you're welcome to stick around for our whole meeting, but that's not required. We might also have, I think, maybe some staff people here for that discussion, which would be great. I appreciate everyone's participation in the discussion. Hopefully, having Ms. Schutze here to share with us is just part of things as we dig into the complicated and important issues related to housing diversity, opportunity, and equity in the city. And so with that, unless we have received any petitions for items not on the agenda... Bazemore? Not, I think we can go right ahead into item number five in the presentation. I assume I have an introduction from someone on staff?
Correct. So Chair Rankin, thank you for that. Just by way of introducing first the Speaker Series as a reminder for the Commission and the audience, and then an introduction for the speaker tonight. So the Planning Commission Speaker Series is an ad hoc speaker series that we schedule them on nights that seem to be relatively light on the agenda. All that can always change as the meeting night approaches. But the idea is to find professionals that are experts in their field on issues that are of interest to the community, but usually for which there is not an active application in front of the Commission. And the idea being that there's an opportunity for the Commission to have a conversation about an important topic, an informed conversation about an important topic, without the pressure of an application in front of them. I think all of these are posted on the city's online planning library. And if we don't have that link available, we can look to start including that in the agenda going forward. But we've covered a range of topics in the Speaker Series, all of great interest to the city. And with that, I actually want to switch over to the topic of tonight, which is on housing. And so I want to introduce Jenny Schutze. Jenny Schutze is a fellow with Brookings Metropolitan Policy Program and the Future of the Middle Class Initiative. Dr. Schutze is an expert in urban economics and housing policy, focusing particularly on housing affordability. She has written extensively on land use regulation, housing prices, urban amenities, and neighborhood change. She has appeared in The New York Times, Wall Street Journal, PBS NewsHour, Washington Post, CNN, The Economist, and Vox. Before joining Brookings, Dr. Schutze served as a principal economist at the Board of Governors of the Federal Reserve System. She was also an assistant professor at the University of Southern California and a postdoctoral fellow at New York University's Furman Center for Real Estate and Urban Policy. She is a non-resident senior fellow at GWU's Center for Washington Area Studies and teaches in Georgetown's Urban Planning Program. Dr. Schutze earned her PhD in public policy from Harvard University, a master's in city planning from MIT, and a BA with highest distinction in economics and political and social thought from the University of Virginia. So obviously, this is going to be a good conversation tonight. And with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Schutze.
Thanks very much, Paul, for that introduction. Thanks, Chair Rankin, for inviting me to be here, and for all of you guys for taking time out of your busy agenda on a Wednesday night. I have a brief presentation, which I'm going to try to share. It looks like I need to get permission.
I think Ms. Bazemore is working on that.
Excellent. Great. All right, can you guys see my slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I'm seeing my full screen as well, so I can't see you guys. So if at some point it cuts out, somebody just give me a ping. So I'm going to start off by giving some broad context. What do we mean by housing affordability? What are the problems that we're trying to solve, both at sort of the national level and then some regional context? And then focus a little bit on some specific policies that would help in making a distinction between things that really the federal government needs to do and is only equipped to do, and then things that local governments and, to a certain extent, state governments could do to help. So to back way up to the sort of the broadest perspective, why is it that we care about housing affordability? This is important both for individuals and families, but also for how well a community and a region functions. So at the individual level, we know that housing is the single largest expense in most families' monthly budget. How much money you spend on housing determines how much money you have left over for everything else. Having a stable place to live, living in decent quality housing, is really the foundation for everything else that people do. So for kids, this is really important to know that they're going to have a place where they can live and do their schoolwork and spend time with their families and sleep at night. People who are worried about not being able to afford the rent or the mortgage are likely to have stress that impacts the other parts of their lives, including their productivity as workers. We also know that where you live is hugely important for all sorts of other things in your life, notably how close you live to your job and what your commuting options are, what public schools your children are able to attend, and then just access to all of the place-based amenities that we enjoy every day. Do you live close to grocery stores and parks and in a safe neighborhood and a healthy environment? So housing is really central to a lot of the outcomes that we care about for people at the individual level. It's also very important for a functioning region. Where we build housing and where we don't build housing within a region impacts the regional labor market, and it has impacts on climate outcomes. This is probably a week when I don't need to remind you why it's important to care about climate change, as we see hurricanes in the Gulf and fires all over the West Coast. One of the real contributors to greenhouse gas emissions is just transportation. So when we build a lot of housing far from job centers, so in the DC region, I'm going to show you, we build a lot of our housing out in the ex-urban fringe. It means that people have to drive really long distances to get to work, and they have to drive to do almost all of their daily errands. Collectively, that adds up to more vehicle miles traveled and more impacts on the environment. It's also not great for people to be spending a lot of their time commuting. That's unproductive, it's not very pleasant, and it makes people cranky before they even show up at work. Obviously, at the moment, we're all working from home, but actually, a lot of essential workers are still doing the commute, and many of the essential workers live in very far-flung communities because that's the only place that they can afford housing. It's also an issue for employers. We know that in the DC region, employers have trouble hiring and recruiting good workers because it's such an expensive place to live. So firms have to hire, have to pay their workers higher salaries to live in DC than they would in a lower-cost city elsewhere. And people have a tendency to leave, particularly younger workers, if they can't buy a home of the sort of size and quality that they expect, they're more likely to move to a lower-cost metro area when they get ready to buy a house and have a little bit more space. So we have a couple of different affordability challenges, and it's worth unpacking them so that we think about the appropriate solution to each one. Sort of the, I think, the most concerning from an equity perspective is that the poorest 20% of households everywhere in the United States are spending, on average, half of their income on housing. So imagine what it feels like when half of your paycheck is gone on the rent or the mortgage, and how much that leaves you to pay for everything else. And this is not just a problem in high-cost areas, this is a problem in rural areas and in relatively inexpensive cities like Detroit and Cleveland, because incomes are also low. So everywhere in the country, poor families are really in a very tight position, just paying for basic quality housing. We also know that low-income families are more likely to live in overcrowded housing and poor-quality housing. That's been a real concern during the pandemic, because there are a lot of people who are sharing very tight spaces. So four or five adults who are sharing a two-bedroom apartment in order to cover the rent costs. That means that it's impossible for them to distance when there are contagious diseases. There are a lot of kids who live in houses that are old, that have poor quality, they may have lead pipes or lead paint, asbestos, droppings from rodents, all of that exacerbates health problems. So again, really dangerous during a public health crisis. And we know that kids grow up with more health problems and are less likely to be productive as adults if they live in poor-quality housing as kids. Homeownership is, in the US, our sort of main way to build wealth. And very concerning, homeownership rates for Black and Latino households are substantially lower than for whites and Asians, even controlling for income. And young people are entering homeownership later than their parents did, which means that they have less time to build wealth before they get to retirement age. So these are quite concerning trends. And then we'll see that our current development patterns, we tend to be building still most of our housing on the outskirts of metropolitan areas, and mostly still single-family houses with yards, which leads to worse environmental impacts and more car traffic for everybody. So I'm going to show you some national statistics before getting into the regional data. This is a graph that shows you all of the households in the US divided into income quintiles, so five equal buckets, and these are actually assigned within metro areas. So within each metro area, how much money do you make relative to the other households? And you can see here, this is showing you the percentage of income that's spent on housing for both owners and renters. The lowest quintile, Q1, in the gray bar, shows you that renters and owners are spending, on average, more than 60% of their income on housing every month. This is a really unsustainable situation. This is how we get to a lot of people being on the verge of eviction. They can barely cover their housing costs, even in a good economy, and you can imagine all they have to do is lose a couple of shifts, have their hours cut back, and there's really no financial cushion there. Once we get to the second income quintile, people are still spending almost 40% of their income on housing, which is more than the federal government recommends. So this is a group that's not able to save up a lot, but is probably not unstably housed in a good situation. Once you get to the middle of the income distribution, most families are able to cover the cost of housing. They may not have the quality or the location that they want, but just straight-out affordability is not a problem for sort of the upper half of the income distribution. And this is a picture nationally, but this looks very similar if you do this for individual metro areas as well. This graph is showing you the relationship between income and homeownership. No big surprises here, as people earn more income, they're more likely to own their own home rather than rent. So the US average is about 64%. And you can see that the top two income quintiles, most people own their own homes. Some of this is due to age. We know that people earn more as they get older, and they're more likely to be settled and to buy a home. But you can see here that for the poorest households, really, these are people in the rental market. And most of the low-income homeowners are older people who bought their homes when they were working and their incomes were higher. So with that pattern in your head, knowing that income is related to homeownership, I'm going to show you another pattern here, which is that within these income quintiles, Black and Latino households are less likely to own their homes than whites and Asians. So you can see the arrows are showing you here that Black households in the middle income quintile, so, you know, straight in the middle class, Black households are less likely to own their home than white households who are in the income quintile below theirs, right? So this is showing you that there's something else going on. Part of this is due to differences in wealth. In order to buy a house, you have to have saved up money for a down payment. Black households in particular, because of historic racial discrimination, families haven't been able to own homes for very long, haven't been able to buy in neighborhoods where values appreciate. And this means that families have less wealth to pass along to the next generation, which really significantly impacts the ability to buy a home to make that initial down payment entry. All right. Shifting from the national perspective to the capital region, so I'm going to show you a couple of graphs that demonstrate where we've been building housing and some of the issues we're concerned with. Really notably, we're building housing in very uneven patterns across the region. Most of the growth over the last 20 years has been in the outlying ex-urban counties, particularly on the Virginia side, not that much going on in the urban core. Most of the new housing that we build is still single-family detached, so we're still building the same kind of houses we were in 1950, even though we have grown enormously. Because single-family homes use more land than smaller homes, they're also more expensive either to buy or rent. So a single-family detached house is the most expensive structure type in any given location, and that's basically what we're still building. Housing costs have risen substantially faster than incomes, particularly in the last 20 years. And this is sort of a mixed blessing, depending on what your tenure status is. So if you bought a house in the capital region 20 years ago, you've seen the value of that go up, which translates into higher wealth. If you are new to the region or a younger household, this means that cost of buying a house has gone up faster than your income, and makes it harder to make that entry into homeownership. And I'll show you that Black and Latino households are spending more of their income on rent in all parts of the region. So this graph is showing you the total amount of housing that we have built, and this is the number of units that were built between 2000 and 2016. That was when we did this report. And we've split this region out into three sort of subregions. The urban core, which is DC, Arlington, and Alexandria. The suburban regions, which includes Fairfax, Montgomery, and PG. And then, of course, this also includes Falls Church and Fairfax City. So I've circled it at the top, and obviously, those are very small compared to the big counties. And then all of the other counties fall into the ex-urban region in green at the right-hand side. So what you'll see here is that, you know, the urban core built about 60,000 housing units between 2000 and 2016. A lot of that is actually in the more recent period post-Great Recession, when DC had a pretty big housing boom. Arlington did a fair amount of its building in the sort of the 2000 to 2008 time period, but that's really a small share of the region's housing growth, right? The green bin is by far the largest of the three sections. So the farther out you go, the more housing we've been building. And really notably here, Loudoun and Prince William County, which were very small in 2000 in population terms, have each built as much housing as Fairfax and Montgomery County, which are much larger, right? So you can imagine that what we've been doing is essentially we grow out and out and out, we keep building these big suburban subdivisions, moving farther out into greenfields. And the urban core, and even a lot of the core suburban regions, including Falls Church, really stopped adding new housing. So this, you know, this is obviously going to contribute to our traffic patterns today. So this shows you for a longer time period what's been going on with household housing values and with income. So house values and income were both pretty stable from about 1980 to 2000. There's a little bit of wiggling around in house values largely with changes in interest rates, but by and large, the ratio of house values to income was about 3 to 1, which is about the national average, and we tend to think of that as being affordable, right? That a family can spend roughly three times its income to buy a house. There's a big spike in house values between 2000 and 2006. Those of you who are living here during that time will remember, this was an enormous bubble all over the country. It is true that part of the increase in house values was because interest rates were coming down, and so the same amount of monthly payment would buy you effectively more in housing values. But nonetheless, there's this big spike in the price to enter homeownership. It takes a dip, obviously, during the Great Recession, started recovering, and if we added the last two years, we would see a continuing upward slope, right? So now, house values to income are about 4 to 1, which is more expensive than it is nationally. This graph is showing you rent burdens. So this is the percent of income spent on rent, broken down both by these urban, suburban, and ex-urban regions, and then by race within each of those regions. And so what you'll see here is that Blacks and Hispanics are spending a higher share of their income on rent, regardless of where they live in the region. So the highest rent burden for Black households is in the urban core. Partly, that's because incomes of Black families living in the district and in parts of Arlington are fairly low, and so they're spending quite a bit of money on rent. Some of this is just an income story, but there are also, if you look at the racial distribution across the region, there are very stark divides between East and West. These reflect some long historic patterns. But again, this sort of is telling us, there's an especially high burden on Black and Hispanic families. The more they're spending on rent in their current place, the less able they are to accumulate savings, either to have a cushion for rainy days, for difficult economic times, or to save up for other things in the future. So getting away from the somewhat depressing data, let's talk about how we can make things better with policies. And really, here, there's a split in responsibilities and ability to change things between the federal government and state and local governments. So the problem for poor families is mostly that they don't earn enough to pay for housing. It's very difficult for local governments to really supplement incomes. If one jurisdiction chooses to, say, give out more generous housing vouchers, then there's an incentive for people to move to that jurisdiction to take advantage of it. So by and large, we think that the federal government should be responsible for providing either income supplements or housing subsidies for poor families, right? Particularly so that poor families who live in jurisdictions that don't have a lot of resources should be able to have access to that, even though the tax base can't support it locally. On the other hand, the issues of housing supply are really within state and local governments' control and not something the federal government can do very much about directly. So we are concerned that in regions like DC, California, most of the Northeast Corridor, we just haven't been building enough housing to keep up with job growth and with income growth. So essentially, housing supply has been lagging demand for about 30 years now. Within regions, we also see this mismatch, that most of the housing is not being built close to job centers or close to our transportation infrastructure. So we're not getting the highest return on public investments in things like rail lines, and we just have these very long commutes for a lot of people. We're still building large, single-family houses on detached lots, which are more expensive than apartments, duplexes, townhouses, things like that. And in a lot of places, including the DC region, the process of building housing has become very long, very discretionary, and very uncertain. So if you talk to home builders, they will tell you that particularly for sort of a larger project, for an apartment building in the urban core, it's not unusual for it to take 10 years or more to get permission from the start of the project until completion. All of that time gets built into the cost of the finished product, and it's largely because we have these sort of layers of discretionary approval in order to be able to build, particularly to build anything other than single-family homes. It's very discretionary. Then there's sort of increasing interest among local governments in what they can do with dedicated local funding to improve affordability. Typically, there's been more interest in doing new construction, that's become really prohibitively expensive in a lot of places. So one of the emerging trends is that more places are looking at acquisition, acquiring existing buildings and putting long-term affordability restrictions on them, preserving existing affordable stock, maybe expiring used projects that can be refinanced to continue their life, and then a very small amount, some locally funded vouchers, mostly among larger cities. So I want to talk a little bit about some of these levers for housing supply, because this is particularly relevant for planning commissions, you guys, the ones who give approval to build stuff. So this is in your real house. Most of the regulatory barriers that we see to housing are local. So at a basic level, the zoning map identifies areas where you're allowed to build apartments or duplexes or single-family detached and single-family detached. So that basic zoning map is telling you what the framework is, what you're allowed to build where. Apartments, which are the lowest-cost form of housing for consumers, are illegal on most land in most jurisdictions. And that's true for big cities like DC, it's true for suburbs like Falls Church and Fairfax, it's true everywhere in the country, that apartments are just illegal to build in those places. I mentioned this very long, complicated, and expensive development process that both makes the final product more expensive, it also, in a sense, shuts out a lot of smaller local developers from even being able to build, right? So you can't build a $20 million apartment project if you're, you know, a family-owned development company. And so it's sort of an anti-competitive process where really a lot of local entrepreneurs would like to get in the business of building homes, and they just can't afford to. The discretionary approval process that we've set up in basically every jurisdiction makes it easier for existing homeowners to block things. So if you think of sort of the decision about whether to build something or not, the people who get to show up at a planning commission meeting and say, "I don't want this, it doesn't look nice, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood," are the people who already live in that jurisdiction. The people who would benefit from it, who would like to move into those apartments or those homes, don't usually live in the jurisdiction yet, and so they don't have standing to come in and say, "I'd like you to build apartments, because then I could afford to live in Falls Church," right? So we've sort of set up this imbalance of power in the process. This is a very exciting time for those of us who study zoning. There's actually a lot of activity going on across the country in a bunch of different places to try to make it easier to build housing, and especially to build apartments, duplexes, you may be familiar with the term sort of missing middle. So sort of everything between a single-family detached house and a high-rise apartment building, there's a lot of emphasis sort of opening up this middle ground of housing. You may have read about Minneapolis, they passed a comprehensive plan almost two years ago now, that essentially made it a by right to build a three-unit apartment building on all the single-family lots in the city. So some people call this ending single-family exclusive zoning, but what this really means is that it's legalizing duplexes and triplexes in all parts of the city. Oregon passed a statewide law about a year and a half ago that did something very similar. So all over the state, it's legal to build smaller lot housing. They have some skinny lots that were approved by this. Duplexes and triplexes, depending on the size of the community, but very similar in spirit. If you guys were paying attention last year in the state legislature's session, one of the new assemblymen from the Northern Virginia area, from Loudoun, introduced a bill to allow duplexes statewide in Virginia that did not make it out of the committee. My understanding is that he plans to introduce a similar bill this year and is trying to build some support in advance of it. I think this year, it's looking like it might be limited to areas around transit stations, but something like that is likely to show up, and we'll see how it goes. This is an issue that's also gotten more federal attention. All of the Democratic presidential candidates, including Joe Biden, had some sort of a platform about increasing housing supply, reducing barriers. Often, this is presented as part of a racial equity platform. Making it easier to build apartments in exclusive neighborhoods would make it easier for Black and Latino families to have access to those communities. The White House even has a council on reducing barriers to affordable housing. So this is really, everybody is talking about zoning, which is very exciting for those of us who talk about it all the time, but it's getting a lot of attention these days. I will say that all of the places that have managed to pass some sort of reform, this has been a multi-year process of building political coalitions, educating homeowners, educating voters, reaching out to other groups to talk about why this is important. Both Minneapolis and Oregon put together coalitions that included sort of traditional pro-development interests, so, you know, construction, including the construction trades were very much in favor of this, but also including environmental groups, racial equity groups, traditional affordable housing advocates. So they've assembled sort of this group of interests who see common ground in making it easier to build low-cost housing. The pushback is almost always from homeowners who are resistant to their neighborhoods changing. So I've been, I've written a couple of pieces on this, one in the DC context, and I'm working on a piece now in Massachusetts that tries to make this a little bit more concrete. What do we talk about when we say gentle density or missing-middle housing? And a lot of this is really thinking about how we could change existing single-family neighborhoods in ways that create more housing, but still are within the context of the neighborhood, right? So it's actually not that much of a concern that we're going to take an existing single-family neighborhood and start building skyscrapers. The lots aren't big enough to support very tall, high-rise buildings. In most cases, the rents- In most cases, the rents aren't high enough that it's worth it to developers to do sort of steel frame construction. But what is very feasible in neighborhoods that have particularly larger, single-family yards is to convert what's now one housing unit into, say, three townhouses sitting side by side on the lot or a small-scale apartment or condo building. Generally, you know, three to six stories is sort of the sweet spot for construction costs there. And so depending on the size of the units, you might get, say, four or five two-bedroom units. You can get more of them if you're building studios in one bedrooms. But you can see that this is, you know, the same-sized lot. This is based actually on on lot sizes in DC. So this is about a 5,000-square-foot lot, which is pretty typical for the district, that you could fairly easily put a six-unit, you know, small condominium building on that lot. And indeed, we see that in a lot of the, sort of the the less-exclusive neighborhoods in DC, the ones that are more pervasive in their zoning, we're seeing a lot of these conversions. This is, I'm going to throw a bunch of numbers at you. This is from a project that I'm still working on, not yet published in the Boston area. We're modeling what it would look like to have a statewide law that allowed, say, up to four-story apartment buildings by right within a half-mile of transit stations. And so this is a mock-up from a station called Needham Heights. This is a pretty expensive and affluent community. It has a number of commuter rail stations. It's about eight to 10 miles away from downtown Boston. So definitely an area that people would want to live and commute into Boston. And so we did, ran a bunch of numbers to see what would it look like? If you if you took an existing lot and built a brand-new, single-family detached house or some townhouses or duplex or some condos, and you can see what the density, target densities are that we're working with here. How many units could you get on this lot? How much would it cost to do this? Would you really get that much of a cost savings? Right? So there's a concern if we're building, you know, fancy new condo buildings, this isn't actually affordable housing. So we wanted to put some numbers on this and see what it looks like. What you can see here is that for sort of a typical lot in Needham in this area, it's about 13,000 square feet. At our target density for townhouses, you could basically get a duplex, get two side-by-side or a duplex there, because these are, these are fairly small. Condos, if we sort of cap the density about 20 units an acre, you could get a six-unit building. So basically, what I showed you in the graph. Land is pretty expensive. So you'd spend over $400,000 just to acquire a piece of land. So it's either a vacant lot or an older house that needs to be torn down and replaced. The hard construction costs are higher for townhouses and condos because you're simply building more of it. So it's more bathrooms and kitchens, more square footage. The soft costs are also higher for townhouses and condos. You're financing more of this. The process is a little more complicated. But when you look at the bottom line, the cost per unit, a brand-new, single-family house would cost about $1.4 million, right? And that's building in sort of a reasonable rate of return for the developer, but assuming that they they would sell it at cost. So $1.4 million for a single-family detached house, $840,000 for a townhome, and $500,000 for a condo. Right? So if you could build a multifamily building by right, you could sell those condos for less than half the value of a new, single-family house. Right? This is not cheap-cheap. This is not going to be affordable to low-income households, but it's going to be affordable to a lot more people than the new, single-family house. Right? So this really does open up. And we actually looked at the possibility of using a housing voucher. And based on HUD standards for Needham, you could actually give a housing voucher, and somebody could afford the monthly costs of of one of these new condos. So that's a pretty big win, actually, for affordability in a place like this. Then I just want to finish with talking a little bit more about what local governments can do with an existing Housing Production Trust Fund or some sort of dedicated funding stream. There's a lot more interest in doing acquisition and rehab over new construction, especially in high-development cost areas like DC. The cost per unit to acquire a building is going to be a lot less. Right? So if it's going to cost you $500,000 to build a new unit of of multifamily housing, you'd be able to acquire one for probably 2 to 250, depending on the the value of the existing structure. Some of those are going to need some work for rehab. But even so, money stretches a lot farther with acquisition, rehab than with new construction. It's also an advantage that you can bring the units online faster. Right? The development process is long. Acquisition and rehab, you can get these units up online in generally less than a year. Now is particularly interesting time to think about what's happening to commercial properties. You've probably been reading all of the dire reports about downtown office space going vacant. Companies not sure that they're going to use it. So both retail and office space are really in trouble at the moment. And it's quite likely that there are going to be some commercial properties that come up for sale in locations that might be very nice to convert to housing. And again, that's relatively inexpensive compared to new construction. I just threw one example here. King County, Washington, has a very enterprising housing authority. They they have their own ability to issue bonds separate from the county, and they have used that pretty strategically, along with some private capital and local philanthropy, including some money from Microsoft, to acquire mixed-income properties along transit corridors. So they decided a number of years ago that this was a long-term strategy they wanted to pursue in neighborhoods that were seeing rapid appreciation, to buy some of these buildings, put them under long-term affordability, and then as the neighborhood sort of becomes more expensive, there's still a foothold for low- and moderate-income households to live. And there are more details on a couple of other local programs at the paper that I've referenced here. So that's it for the presentation. Hopefully, this has teed up some interesting questions. I don't know all of the things that you guys have been debating, but hopefully this overlaps at least a certain amount with some of the things on your agenda. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you have at this point.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Schutz. That was very informative and helpful, I think. I'm sure we do have questions. I, what I like to do is give all the planning commissioners a chance to ask some quick questions. And also, I'll give Jordan a chance to to make any comments or questions. I'm going to start at the top of my attendees list and go with Ms. Weiss.
Um, I have several questions, and I want to thank you, Ms. Schutz, for joining us tonight. That was extremely informative. And I already feel like I'd like to have you back again for a follow-up conversation. This is obviously more complex than we can handle in 20 minutes. Um, I guess if I would limit my long list of questions to one, and if we have a chance to come back, I would love to. But if we were going to limit our long list of questions to one, I guess my question would be, when you think about a small jurisdiction like Falls Church, given how small we are in that sort of portion of, you know, overall urban or regional housing, what is the most effective solution that, or role that we can play in increasing affordable housing regionally? What can we do? We're so small.
There we go. I mean, Falls Church is not going to be able to build enough housing to sort of change the the regional housing market, either kind of in a supply sense, driving down prices or absorbing a lot of the demand for that. I would say two things on sort of the the very concrete level. You know, look at your zoning map and see if there are some areas where it might work to allow duplexes and triplexes, including things like conversions of single-family homes. You know, depending on the the size of the house, sometimes that can work pretty nicely. And again, it's relatively inexpensive to do. But sort of these these introducing smaller properties. You know, I I live in the district, and the neighborhoods by me, you see row houses that get turned from single-family into eight units, right? That adds a lot of housing without actually being a bigger structure. It just accommodates more people. And so, you know, Falls Church probably has some areas, maybe starting closer to the commercial, the commercial corridor and sort of moving out from there. But think about where you can get just a little bit more housing and make the zoning a little bit more flexible. The other thing that, you know, a smaller jurisdiction should be talking to your neighbors. I will say Arlington is also, you know, Arlington is kind of midsize. It's bigger than Falls Church, but it's nowhere near Fairfax and Montgomery. And they're also looking very hard at their single-family neighborhoods. You know, they've really prioritized their transit corridors, but they're kind of running into the limits of that. And they are starting to have some conversations about what do we do with the single-family neighborhoods? What do we do with North Arlington? You know, what do we do with some of the areas that are, you know, three or four blocks away from transit? And, you know, Arlington and Falls Church together having a strategy. I don't know as much about what's going on in the Fairfax conversations, but, you know, you guys participate in the in the COG meetings. The more that jurisdictions in the region are talking to one another about moving in the same direction, the better it is. And particularly a sort of inner suburban core, Montgomery, Fairfax, Falls Church, that, you know, most of your new, most of your housing got added in the 80s and 90s. And really, post-2000, the suburbs have not collectively been building that much housing. You know, so if it's, it's hard for one jurisdiction to be the first one to go, and you sort of worry that you're going to get all of the demand. But having some agreement about moving in the same direction together would be really helpful.
Thanks for that. And Ms. Weiss, I think we'll just start with one question each, because I suspect we could spend all night talking about this. But I'll give you a chance to end if you have a follow-up. Next on the list, Mr. Krasner, do you have any comments or questions or a comment or question?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. I mean, very timely presentation tonight. I appreciated it. It was clearly well-researched. And I think timely because, you know, I think this is probably the first time, at least in my recollection, you know, that we've heard, you know, heard this issue at the, you know, all the way at the top during the presidential election. I don't think I've heard zoning mentioned in a presidential campaign ever. And I've heard it mentioned quite a bit in this campaign and the idea of of single-family zoning and suburban, the suburban environment. And I think that, to me, that the question I would, I would ask you is, you know, I think that even in what I'll say are uber-progressive but affluent neighborhoods, like Falls Church, let's say, you know, how do you, how would you recommend strategies to help sort of sell the idea? Because I think what you often find, and what I've at least found anecdotally in my experience, is that you will find people in neighborhoods like Falls Church, like North Arlington, like you just mentioned, and probably others in the region, that if you stop them in a shopping center and ask people coming in and out of a supermarket, do you think these things are good ideas? They would probably, you'd probably get a very positive response. And I would dare say overwhelming majority of the people you would stop would probably say, absolutely, this sounds like a pretty great idea. But then when you propose it, you know, on their block, in their single-family detached neighborhood, you, you know, you maybe get a slightly different response. And I guess the question I would ask is if you have any experience in how this idea, you know, how to sell this idea so that it gains more popular support and more traction in those affluent, you know, lower, lower-density suburban neighborhoods that happen to also be in very fortuitous locations for commuting and other things, and like, just like Falls Church. And so, because I always feel there's that disconnect where, you know, again, it's, people think it's great, but you come up against the the NIMBY attitude. And we talked about density, and you can hear it in the presidential campaign, people using that as a fear tactic about what might happen to the suburbs. And I think that, I've always found, is the most difficult challenge implementing something like this.
Yeah, now that's the, that is absolutely the key question. How do you sell this politically? And I would say that it, you know, you have to match the argument to your audience. And I mean that in a very local sense. So Minneapolis led very hard with a racial equity framing. You know, they have sort of the the maps of red lighting, that Minneapolis had limited access by black households to a lot of neighborhoods for a long time. And that was, you know, persuasive for the coalition that they were putting together. Oregon, Oregon leaned pretty hard on the environmental angle, which is, you know, not surprising for them. They were also doing a statewide proposal, which is a little bit different. You know, there are some, there are some practical concerns that people raise that are very legitimate. Right? So if you start talking about building 10-story apartment buildings, people are going to freak out, right? That would look very out of context. So some of this is about showing graphics. You know, for for people who don't have 20 units an acre in their head, what does that look like? Showing them particularly that this can be done in an architectural style that fits in with existing housing, right? It doesn't have to be something that looks really out of context, not just for sort of the height and the bulk, but also the style. Right? And there are, you know, you guys probably have some good local architects you work with to show people what some of these things can look like, I think can be reassuring. You know, talking honestly about parking. Are you, you know, if people are going to have cars, you're going to need to accommodate off-street parking for this not to become an issue with the neighborhood. But again, like, the closer you are to the metro stations, the less of an issue that's likely to be. The smaller units tend to have fewer families with kids. So if you're worried about school funding, right? Building studio and one-bedroom apartments, even two-bedroom apartments, those are mostly occupied by families without kids. These are often a net plus to the local fiscal situation because they bring in property taxes and don't actually use a lot of city services. That's one of the big misconceptions. You know, but having, having some conversations about the sort of the real concerns that people have and, you know, maybe also pushing back on the racial equity side. You know, Falls Church, my, my understanding is that Falls Church has been getting whiter over time, and the region as a whole is becoming more black and brown. Right? That's because of the difference in housing costs. And so one of the ways to keep Falls Church diverse and accessible to a range of households is to have a diversity of housing stock, right? And it's, it's, I think it's also reassuring to people that the housing stock changes slowly over time. Even if Falls Church rewrote its zoning code tomorrow to allow, you know, fourplex units on every single-family lot, it's not like all of the single-family homes would actually be torn down and redeveloped in, you know, five years. It's a really slow process of change and evolution. And so allowing a little bit more flexibility in the zoning code will, over the next decades, start to look different, but it's not going to be an overnight change.
All right. Thanks for that. Up next, I have, Rob, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Great. Thanks, Jenny, very much. That was, it's very informative. It's, as Brent said, exactly what we need right now. I think that the, your, your point on overcoming local opposite, local opposite, local opposition, that's really what our challenge is right now. And so education, more information, kind of the research angle for this, I think is very important. Especially because I think of some of the misconceptions that there are. I, a big problem that I, I don't, I know we don't really have answers for this, but is how you, how you overcome the way that we approve projects, which, as you pointed out, is not always for the people that live there. They're for people from, that we're trying to attract from elsewhere. And so those are not the voices that are going to come out and and support housing, formal or otherwise, because they don't, they don't live in the area, and all you're going to get is is opposition. So that's, that's going to be our biggest challenge. Those tips you gave for Mr. Krasner, I think are very helpful. I do think a lot of this is about parking. It's always about parking. It drives me crazy. But it's also, there are also, especially when it comes to affordable and subsidized housing, there are concerns about effects on market, market-rate housing. So what does the research show about the effects of subsidized housing on market rate housing?
Yeah, so I can share with you a couple of resources on that. Some, a lot of it is context-specific. So for instance, there's been a bunch of research in New York to show that the areas around new light tech properties actually see an increase in property values. But those are often because they're replacing sort of an older, pretty dilapidated building with what is a new construction building. You know, I think the best nationwide study finds that light tech projects and similar subsidized properties tend to raise property values in low-income neighborhoods, and they do decrease them in high-income neighborhoods. You know, I will say that it, there's a tendency sometimes to conflate apartments with subsidized housing. And that's not at all the case, right? So you could imagine multifamily housing that is market rate, multifamily housing that is owner-occupied. So to the extent that people are worried about renters, you know, there are lots of ways to add housing and density without it necessarily being subsidized. And if that's an easier sell, you know, I'm, I'm not convinced that every neighborhood needs to have subsidized housing. Every neighborhood just needs to build more housing and needs to have somewhat of a range of prices. One other sort of political argument that is often helpful if you've got older homeowners, they, they may be looking around at the prices and saying, wow, my kids can't afford to move back here. You know, they, they can't afford to move back and buy a house in the neighborhood they grew up in. The answer to that is build some smaller, you know, entry-level homes, right? So a condo and a multifamily building is an entry-level home at this point. And so that can sometimes be persuasive. You know, I think there are a lot of neighborhoods, too, that are predominantly single-family homes, often multiple stories with stairs, with older homeowners who, at some point, are going to have trouble living in those single-family detached homes and maintaining them. They would like to stay in the neighborhood, but maybe move to a more accessible structure, but we don't build them, right? So, you know, ARP would love to be able to build more elevator-accessible, kind of small, you know, older, older adult-appropriate housing in neighborhoods that are predominantly single families, so people can move down the street, stay with their same routine, but have an apartment that's a little bit more appropriate for them.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thanks, Rob. Russ, do you have a question?
Yeah, sure. Like my colleagues, I thank you very much for taking the time out to speak with us. This is informative. Over the last year or two, we've, you know, started, we've worked on our comprehensive plan and we've talked about demographics. And so this is really a helpful add addition to those conversations. And you framed it quite nicely for, for easy understanding. Some of the questions have already been asked or really where I wanted to focus. So I just want to just to understand one clarification. I'm trying to reconcile this, this point you keep making about the environmental groups being very supportive of these proposals while at the same time, what appeared in your graphic was that we were taking a lot of green space and it said like more home, less land. So I, I guess I, I guess I understand it as saying this is overall benefit in terms of smaller commutes and, you know, higher density. And that's where the environmental savings are. But when we even try to do a subdivision of one house to two houses, you know, the, the community is up in arms about environmental issues and lots of coverage or there's additional coverage to the land. How, how are you seeing that those two things are reconciled, that the environmental groups are on board with taking away impervious spaces?
Yeah. So I should say that not all of the environmental groups are lined up behind this. Actually, in California, the Sierra Club is sort of passionately anti building any new housing at all on the theory that if you don't build new homes, then more people won't move to the region. That's turned out not to be true. People still move there. It's just that instead of living in downtown San Francisco and not having a car and walking, they're living in the Central Valley and they're driving two hours each way to work. So a lot of this is very much about the regional kind of transportation. And, and Rob could certainly talk to that more than I could. You know, you, you saw from the graph of where we're building housing, we're building our housing in Loudon and Prince William and Spotsylvania. That's where the new housing is. People don't work primarily in, some of them work in Loudon, but they're not working in Spotsylvania and Rappahannock. They're working in Tysons and Reston, right? If we were building more homes close to Tysons and Reston, you'd have a lot fewer people having to drive very long distances. There's also an environmental benefit to having smaller, more compact structures. So if you think about the amount of energy it takes to heat and cool a single family detached house versus even a, an attached townhouse, you know, smaller square footage, more units per building, use a lot less energy. There's actually a great new paper that just came out this week from MIT showing the, the carbon footprint per household down to the census tract level for the entire US. And when you zoom in on dense urban areas, the carbon footprint per household is much, much less in large part because of the structures they're living in. They're more energy efficient structures and they just, you know, they, they use a lot less energy and produce a lot less greenhouse gases. It's, it's a little counterintuitive to see sort of less green space on the lot. But if you think about how much green space we're losing by putting the same households in bigger homes farther out, right? We're eating up a lot of green space on the urban fringe rather than reusing the infrastructure that already exists.
Great. Thank you. That was really helpful.
Yeah, that was, that was a lot of good information there. All right, moving on, Mr. Stevens' comment question?
Yes, I do. Dr. Schutz, I heard you recently on the Strong Towns podcast, so I knew we were in for a very informative evening. You haven't let us down. In fact, I'm glad this is being recorded so that we can refer other people here in the city to, to come and hear this. Given your past association with the Federal Reserve, I was just curious what your thoughts are kind of moving away from the tactical to a higher policy level of low interest rates, modern monetary, modern monetary theory and the headwind that that gives to housing prices and the things that we try to do to overcome that.
Yeah, the, the secret is that although I worked at the Federal Reserve, I am not a macroeconomist or, and monetary policy is actually well outside my, my range of knowledge. I worked in the Consumer and Community Affairs Group. I mean, in general, low interest rates are great for people who want to buy homes for the first time. And so, you know, the Fed said today they're planning to keep interest rates close to zero, I think until 2023. So, you know, this certainly encourages people who have income and have savings and good credit to go out and buy a house and existing homeowners also to refinance, you know, and save themselves some money. It doesn't necessarily help that much on sort of the new construction of lower cost housing. You know, this, this does translate somewhat into the cost of things like construction loans or permanent loans. But most of the, the larger properties, you know, are sort of being built by developers who have access to capital markets anyway. So there, there's not sort of a really clear connection with kind of the, the affordable market. And modern monetary theory, I'm going to punt on completely.
We'll line up a different speaker for that one. All right. I think that's all the planning commissioners. I have, I have a comment, but I'll let Jordan Hicks go if Jordan has a comment or question.
Yeah, thanks very much. And Jay, thank you for taking the time. Just echo everyone else's. Thanks for that. So I'm, I'm part of the city's housing commission. My question is, you know, in recent times, certainly the, the primary way that the city has added affordable housing units is through development of large apartments or large condos, the new builds that are, that go up and go in. A percentage of those units are reserved to be affordable housing, affordable dwelling units. The percentages in each building have sort of varied over time. And I was wondering if you could provide us with any sort of advice on what you view as sort of the, the best rate or the best goal to be, be shooting for when we carve out those ADUs and the, you know, the voluntary concessions and through the negotiations with the developers?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. And there isn't one answer. The smaller the building, the harder it is to provide any low income set aside. So I don't know what the minimum project size is in Falls Church that it kicks in. You know, there, there are places that sort of apply this to anything with, you know, more than five units per building and, you know, smaller than a 10 or 20 unit building, it's really hard to have set asides of any percentage and make it work. You know, more than 10% is usually hard to do and make the deal continue to pencil unless there's a really substantial density bonus. You know, so I would say sort of the five to 10% range is generally not going to be that much of a, of a barrier. So particularly for larger projects, developers can usually absorb that and pass along the, the higher rents to market rate tenants. You know, more than 10%, it starts pushing the, the financial feasibility of the deal. But again, it depends, you know, if particularly if there are cases where you've got, say, city owned land or something that makes the, the cost lower to the developer right out of the gate, then it's certainly possible to get more on the affordable side.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. I think I've gotten everyone and I have a couple of comments real quick, but I definitely appreciate you taking the time, Dr. Schutz, to join us. It's been great. And like Corey said, it might be nice to try to entice you back again since I know we're going to run out of time and I'm sure people have lots of other questions. My, my, my challenge with this, we've sort of touched on it, is how to, well, so there, we could definitely increase the housing and have some slightly more affordable stuff. But if we really want to have actual affordable housing for, for kind of the people that we were talking about earlier in terms of adding more diverse population living here, it seems hard to imagine doing that via market forces. We'd have to build something pretty dang small to really be affordable. I think we have some affordable things, but it's older stock. So obviously that's definitely a great strategy in terms of trying to maintain that. But obviously you can't build something old when you build it, it's new. So if it doesn't already exist. So, so, so one, one thought I had is I like the idea of, you know, some multifamily stuff on single family lots. But, you know, I'm wondering if there's a way for us to control it via zoning so that you could build a quadplex or something, but the, but control the unit sizes. Cause, you know, the example we give is there's a lot on one of our streets here, Great Falls, and there's a single family home, but the lot was just big enough that they could put in a duplex because we do have some options there. And so of course, then you have a duplex and each, each unit of the duplex sells for a million bucks. So it's like, okay, so instead of a $1.3 million single, let me ask you, a $2 million duplex is like, that's not really moving the needle. I mean, I guess that's better than one expensive house in some level, but it's not really solving the problem. So so that's one, I'm going to ask much questions. You don't have to actually answer them. But that's one challenge I see is like, how do you control the construction so that what you make is sort of market affordable? And it's just hard to imagine that working out. But then, you know, your example of reducing the, the construction cost is, is great, but unless the city is building stuff and renting it out, like the, the prices around here are definitely not driven by the cost of building. It is driven by the demand. So you, you know, let somebody build more units for less, the developer's like, great, I can make even more money. They're, they're not going to just take their margin and be happy with it. So that's, that's the other challenge. But the real challenge, I think, is one of the main things I would like to see with the diversity, like, is having more families with kids in our schools, growing up with our kids. And that's in some ways one of the hardest things because that's the thing that most people are actually afraid of is the cost of, of that. And, you know, I think workforce housing and stuff like that is important. I have a business in town. We employ 30 or so people in the area and people live as far away as Maryland to Nashburn and some in DC and some in Falls Church. And I would love for everybody to live closer, but but to me, it's getting kids in the school system of different, diverse backgrounds. And that's, seems like the only way that we're really going to achieve that at scale is to figure out a way to pay for some sort of subsidized family housing, which, you know, I know we have the, I forget what it's called, the fields, I don't know, one of these things that's going to go, you know, running out of the, the federal backing of it from, from years ago. And so anyway, all that to say, I think it's a complicated problem. I think zoning is definitely part of it. And as a planning commissioner, we can do it, but I think we have to, we have to make sure that if we make some changes, it's actually going to solve the problem or at least help the problem. Otherwise, you're going to get right to the finish line and people are going to be like, wait a second, this isn't going to actually solve the problem and it will struggle with it. So I've always, I've been trying to think more about realistically, what can we do and how do we get there versus some high level tweaks to zoning that might work in a larger place with lots of different areas that have different values and stuff like that. But everything in Falls Church is, is going to be valuable. You know, you, you change the rules about what you can build, the land prices are going to go up. Cause now I can build the duplex and stuff like that. So it's a, it is a tough challenge, but the more information we can get, more advice we can get from people like you, I think closer we'll get to a solution that's viable. So that wasn't even a question or is it much of unanswerable questions?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're right. This is not a simple problem. It, it's not a problem that any one jurisdiction, I mean, even, you know, even if Fairfax wanted to sort of make large changes, they're not going to move the region. So the, Falls Church absolutely can't solve the regional housing shortage and affordability problem by itself. And you guys shouldn't feel like you have to try. You know, I do think that the more conversations that your planning director and is having at COG, the more that all the planning directors are thinking about this together, the more likely that the region gets to better outcomes. You know, and, and talking honestly about what Falls Church should be doing and what Fairfax and Montgomery should be doing. I mean, if Fairfax and Montgomery were building at the rate that they built in the eighties and nineties, the region overall would be doing better, right? And they need a little bit of nudging, you know. Can, can use, use the, the political channels that are available. You're, you're absolutely right that zoning alone is not going to get you housing that's affordable to low and moderate income households and especially families with kids. You know, the, the easiest way to get cheaper housing is to build smaller housing. So, you know, if you're, if, if you allowed a ton of studios to be built in really tall buildings, you could get studio rents that are, that are cheaper than they are now, but that's not going to help you with families, right? You know, some of it is a question of like, making progress is better than not making progress, right? So building, building $800,000, you know, condo units in a four unit building is still better than, you know, $1.5 million single family houses. It doesn't get you all the way there, but it's better. You know, the acquisition strategy can help, you know, definitely keep whatever existing affordable housing, right? One of the, the, the easiest way is to keep stuff affordable is to keep old buildings, keep them habitable. And if you can, buy down the financing, right? Your money is going to stretch a lot further than new construction. And once affordable housing is lost, it is really, really hard to replace. Thinking about maybe using some of the funds for down payment assistance, right? So if there are more kind of entry level homes built, could you provide down payment assistance to low income families, right? Again, you're not bearing the full cost of the construction. You're just helping a little bit.
Yeah. And I, and I think, I mean, I think one of the solutions, it is a bunch of studio apartments in a tall building that then frees up some resources to actually make family affordable housing available elsewhere. That, that's a big challenge as well. All right. We're way over time. It's been worth it though. I, if someone has a burning question that they just can't, they wouldn't be able to fall asleep tonight, they couldn't ask, you can unmute and ask it. Otherwise, I think we should move on. Everyone is showing great restraint. I appreciate that. All right.
And you guys, you, you have my email address. You know, you know how to get in touch with me. If you, if you have questions, you can send them individually. And if you have more questions and want to do another session, let me know.
All right. I really appreciate that. I appreciate your time. I know everyone's got a lot going on right now. And it's been great to have you and you're welcome back anytime. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. That was great. I'd love to do more of that down the road. But let's catch up a little bit here on the agenda. We're on to item 6A, the September 2nd minutes. I took a look at them. They looked great. Does anyone have any suggested alterations or are they good as presented? Not seeing anyone chime in. Rob, you unmuted. Are you going to make a motion or you haven't added?
I move. We approve the minutes of September 2nd.
Second.
Outstanding motion from Mr. Puentez, second from Ms. Weiss. I'll take a quick roll call vote. Ms. Bazemore, please. Yes.
Yes.
Abstaining.
Yes.
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 All right. That was quick. Now on to item 6B, the George Mason High School Phase Two Site Plan Parking Lot Public Hearing and Action. As far as I know, there are very few changes to this from when we saw it before. However, I think there's a quick staff rundown of the small changes that are is that right?
Yeah, if I could, Chair Rankin, and I apologize for getting this out to the commission late today. It was an adjustment from what was posted in the package earlier. You're correct that there are no changes in the, in the submitted materials since the commission's last work session, which was on August 19th. Just scrolling up, there are, if I can find the page up button, there we go. There are some sections highlighted in yellow. Those are the materials that were sent out earlier today. And this is really just a clarifying, a set of clarifying clauses. It is very common when site plans come up for approval that there are usually some number of what are called site plan waivers that get attached to that approval. This amended motion that was sent to you does specifically call out which waivers are being recommended for approval. The other thing that's called out, that last whereas clause is really speaking to the status of some ongoing negotiations for some temporary parking needs. As proposed by the applicant, the, ultimately the, the total number of parking spaces that's there at final development meets code. But there are some temporary conditions while there's some coordination of, of construction and demolition. And so what planning staff is recommending is that that be accommodated via a parking waiver, which would understandably be limited in term. And of course, it is accounted for by the, by the parking agreement that's being negotiated amongst the parties. And so the condition that's recommended for approval at the bottom of the motion there is the condition to be granted tonight with the understanding that the, the parking agreement that's, I understand is being finalized over the next few days, or already has been, would be reviewed by, by staff just to confirm that it, that it satisfies what, what's, what's needed. Would you, now there, as I said, there were no changes from the, the last work session. Would you like a brief presentation on the item either from the case planner, Jeff Holler, or the, the applicant?
I think, although let me clarify, because, you know, we had the in the packet, make sure I'm looking at the right thing. We had your report and I have this one with a bunch of yellow, but a lot of that yellow We had your report and I have this one with a bunch of yellow, but a lot of that yellow is not, we're not looking at like some big change. It's just capturing these waivers in the motion, is that right?
Yeah, there's no change to the material or the staff analysis. We just wanted to be clear in the motion. That those waivers were also being approved by the planning commission.
All right. Yeah, I mean, if if staff, I don't, I mean, I, it all seems fine to me, but if staff has any quick comments on it. I mean, we we went through it. I think the main challenge is that. While the commercial site is being developed, there could be some disruption in the parking available to the school. And that's an awkward thing to solve right now when nobody even knows when anyone's going to go back to school.
Yeah, maybe what would be helpful, I guess, like I said, there's no change in the staff analysis. I I don't know if the applicant team just wants to to speak to sort of the the phasing strategy or or sort of when the parking would 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 be in use.
That'd be great.
So, um, my name is Kate and I'm here from the applicant team, I'm one of the the project managers for the project. So to sort of speak to our overall strategy, we are looking at. A combination of using parking that that will be available sort of on the old high school site. And then moving that parking sort of around. As as the demolition occurs, there are a number of of parking lots on that site. And so sort of moving available parking around to accommodate the the demolition. And so making sure that there's room both for the demolition to mobilize on site, but also for there to be some parking used on that site. And then as well, looking into neighboring parking lots, including the Virginia Tech site. So we are currently in negotiations with, so we're currently working through and we actually. Looks like we finalized it like slightly before the meeting today, but working with the developer, EYA partners to. Understand their phasing patterns and how many parking spaces they can offer us on the on the old George Mason High School site. And then with the balance of those, working with Virginia Tech and other local parking partners to see where we might be able to make up the balance.
All right, that makes sense to me. Do any commissioners have any, well, is there any other comments from the applicant?
This is Daisy Bregman, also owner's representative for the team. The only thing I wanted to add, which I believe was brought up during the last meeting and discussion, is we are committed to providing four hundred parking spaces when school is fully open. As you mentioned, we don't really know what the reality is going to be when, you know, right now we're scheduled to open in January. So we definitely want to be mindful of city and and FCCPS resources and not pay for parking that we're not going to use. So if and when that happens, you know, we'll adjust accordingly. But we're really only talking about a hundred and ninety-three parking spaces that are impacted by the trapezoid in the development area. The rest of the parking spaces would be available on the school site.
Okay. All right, thanks for that information. Any commissioners, I'm going to look for people who unmute. If they have any questions or comments, I see that Mr. Stevens is unmuted, but.
Yes, I did have just a couple of questions regarding the request for staff review of the MOU. I think you might have answered this, Paul, but I just want to make sure that that I understood that. You're basically just saying that the review that you're asking for would only be with respect to making sure that it's consistent with what's required from the from the code.
Yeah, I think, well, it it's worded more generally as as a waiver to the parking requirement. So I think, as as Ms. Bregman said, the the conditions on the, at the time, based on, you know, how open are the schools? How much parking is being utilized? I I think the the requested waiver would leave it perhaps a little bit more open. So so it may not be that the full four hundred spaces is required during this interim time.
But it would be focused on the the number of parking spaces. That's the kind of the locus of your review.
Correct. Yeah, I would look at the number of parking spaces and and whether that's sufficient to to meet the the parking demand.
I think having discretion to temporarily approve a smaller number is probably makes sense, given everything that's going on with COVID. So I guess I'm, you know, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't, you know, kind of a tabula rasa. Sort of situation that, you know, that it was constrained in terms of the view that that they'll be ending making. So thanks for clarifying. The only other thing, and this may have been covered in the work session, and I just forgot, the the one waiver having to do with soil within the planning islands. And I think it says that the that the school team is not addressing that. I'm just curious if the city arborist had any issues with that.
I don't know that the the city arborist is on the call tonight, so maybe I'll. If you'll allow, maybe I'll actually flip that question to the applicant in terms of how that's been been addressed in the conversation today.
Guys, hi, this is Jack with the design team. Can can you flip to that specific waiver? I want to make sure that I'm answering the right question, please.
It says, it's number five, section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-one B three includes minimum specifications for soil within parking lot planting islands. And then it says in parentheses, not provided.
You're not going to give us any dirt? Come on.
We can provide that. I don't know. That's a new one. I thought we provided it, but I think we we can provide that. We we do have soil specifications.
Did seem odd that.
It is a little odd, yeah. I'm sorry I didn't catch that earlier, Paul. But that is something we can provide. Yeah, it's, there's nothing abnormal about what we're providing in the area in terms of soil specifications. So I can certainly follow up with staff after this evening to to do exactly that.
So maybe when we do our motion, rather than saying not provided, we can say to be provided.
Yeah. Yeah, or if it's being provided, we can just leave number five off.
Well, that'd be better.
Paul, do you have a thought on that?
Uh, I, you know, I think if if the applicant's confident that they can sort of meet the the provision. I think maybe what to do, just in case something comes up, I think it might be helpful to move it as a. As some sort of a, you know, make it clear that in the condition that that the the applicant's going to going to sort of provide those soil samples. Maybe to the satisfaction of the city arborist.
That works for us.
Sounds good. That'll be a on the fly adjustment to whoever makes the motion. Mr. Stevens, do you have anything else?
That's it, thanks.
Anyone else want to unmute and ask a question? No. This, this is a public hearing. Ms. Bazemore, do we have any comments from the public on this issue? That's a big surprise. All right. Well, I think then it's straightforward. I just need someone to make this long motion with that on the fly tweak to number five. Anyone up for it? It's fun. Come on, guys. This was my favorite part when I was in chair. Melissa over here, she would do it. Tim, you're muted. It's all on you.
Well, I could try, having read through this earlier, some of the wording is. Probably needs a little smoothing. For example, in the fourth, whereas, there's a sentence required information in the absence of the particular requirements. Well, it's kind of lacking a verb or something. I don't, I'm not sure what that means.
Well, you can adjust on the fly and we won't hold any awkward phrasing against you.
Okay, well, with that, with that permission, then I'll go ahead and give this a try. Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt site plan application number twenty nineteen dash zero zero one three. Whereas the planned George Mason High School and related campus site improvements provide significant community benefits in providing for the construction of a new high school and adjacent land to provide for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. It proposed vibrant mixed use development. And whereas the planned George Mason High School project is generally consistent with zoning and the comprehensive plan. And whereas the site plan does have all information required for full site plan approval. And whereas the planning commission finds approval of phase two will achieve the essential objectives of Division Seven site plans. Chapter forty-eight dash eleven thirty-seven, including required information in the absence of particular requirements. And whereas the planning commission recognizes that the site plan will be constructed in phases as provided for in section forty-eight dash eleven thirty-nine. Phase development of the city code with the phases being as follows. One, phase one A is the site area as defined by the site plan excluding phase two area. But including only limited site development and pre-construction activities as follows. Construction fencing, site demolition, rough grading, excavation, foundation, and puddings and utility work to serve the existing concessions building. Two, phase one B is the site area as defined by the site plan excluding phase two area. Allowing any other construction building activities. Three, phase two includes all work on the phase two area of the plans for the trapezoid area and future parking, stormwater, and other related site plan requirements. And whereas the following parking lot perimeter buffer and landscape waivers are requested. Number one, section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-one two A one requires a minimum ten foot wide landscape buffer around parking lots. That's reduced to four and a half to five feet on average. Number two, section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-one B one requires one one hundred and sixty-two square foot for each three thousand two hundred and forty square feet of parking lot area. And each island must contain at least one shade tree. Applicant is going to meet twenty-six percent of that requirement. Number three, section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-one B requires five percent interior landscape area versus the one point two six percent that has been requested. Number four, section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-one D two requires every parking space to be less than ninety feet from landscaping trees. That is not provided by the applicant. And number five, section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-one D three includes minimum specifications for soil within parking lot planting islands. That is to be provided at a later date with review by the city arborists. And whereas under section forty-eight dash eleven thirty-eight, the planning commission, a waiver is required for the off-site parking requirements during the phase two site plan trapezoid area as provided under the parking agreement titled tripartite parking memorandum of understanding among the city of Falls Church, Falls Church City Public Schools, and FC, the Falls Church Gateway Partners. Undated for temporary construction period, January to September twenty twenty twenty-one. As reasonable due to the particular circumstances and that the essential objectives of adequate parking can be achieved. And whereas understanding the importance of the project to the community and the need to face construction with the academic year. And now therefore I move that the planning commission approves phase two of site plan application number twenty nineteen dash zero zero one three for the planned George Mason High School and grant listed waivers with the final executed off-site parking MOU subject to administrative staff review and approval.
Well, thank you, Tim. That was great.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, this is Jack with the design team. If I may, I I I just looked up the forty-eight eleven eighty-one.
Okay.
And I and I understand what it is. The wording that is stated on 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 this motion was a little confusing. So that that's talking about the the actual area requirements for the parking islands and 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 perhaps also the perimeter. Landscape features and and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong. So if that if that is the case, as opposed to specifications for soil, which I'm thinking is, you know, soil. Content and things like that, then that is that is correct. I I really apologize for not picking that up earlier.
That's okay. So if I understand that correctly, it's similar to this. Five percent interior landscape area, but it has something to do with planting islands. Paul, is that ringing a bell? I don't know who on the staff side would would know.
Well, once we get into the to the read details of the review, I might turn it over. Gary Fuller, if you're on the call.
I see him there.
Yes, yeah, I'm on. And then, and then we've got Jeff also. This was looked at by the city arborist and so they're not going to meet the requirements on that, so that statement is is only to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm fine with it as long as it makes sense to whoever is going to be assessing these things.
It was reviewed by the city arborist and commented on and and, you know, so this is the final version of it. Basically, there is not a percentage, so therefore that statement that you saw in parentheses at the end of it. So we can, we can move forward. Striking that indication that the soil samples to the satisfaction of the arborist out of the motion.
All right, so Tim's motion was good, but instead of the arborist satisfaction, we go back to not provided.
Yes.
All right, I don't know if we need an official amendment to that. So here, I assume, Mr. Stevens, you are okay with that amendment?
I am okay with that explanation.
All right, read the whole thing again. Just kidding. I don't think anybody wants that. All right, I have a motion clarified to what number five I actually said. Now I need a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Puentez. Any final comments before we take a vote on this? I suspect none, but here's your chance. Okay, Ms. Bazemore, could you call a vote on this one, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, got that one done with. Now we're on to number item six C, which is very similar. It's the George Mason High School Phase One Site Plan Amendment for landscaping. I think this has even fewer changes or adjustments since we heard it at our last work session. And so I don't even know if staff has anything to say about this.
I can't say we did not adjust our recommendation the day of the meeting on this one, so that's that's a plus. But same thing, no changes in the in the submitted materials since your last work session, so this is up for you for action. This is as described in the report, this is an amendment to the previously approved landscaping for the site immediately around the the high school, middle school. And that's it.
All right, well, I won't even ask applicant unless they want to say something, say something unless there are commissioner questions. If I recall, this had to do with removing certain types of plants for turf and stuff like that. We hashed it all out. It seemed seemed squared away. So I'm looking for anyone to unmute if they have any comments or questions. Not seeing any now. I'm just, and I'm going to just, if the applicant really wants to say something, they can unmute. But I'm going to assume they're cool because it looks like it's going to work out. So now I just need someone to make a motion here. It's not quite as.
I can, I'll I'll do it. I'll do it.
Thanks, Brett.
This one is, this one's low hanging fruit here. I think I can handle this one. So, okay, in the matter of site plan amendment number twenty nineteen dash zero zero one three. City of Falls Church Public Schools to allow construction of a new George Mason High School and related campus site improvements on approximately twenty-four acres of land located at seventy-one twenty-four Lees Brook Pike. RPC number fifty-one dash two two one dash zero zero one, fifty-one dash two two one dash zero zero two. And fifty-one dash two two one dash zero zero three of the Falls Church real property records, all zoned, sorry, zoned B one. Central and central business district, oh, sorry, B one central business district for a landscape amendment. Whereas the planned George Mason High School and related campus site improvements provide significant community benefits in providing for the construction of a new high school and adjacent land to provide for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. Proposed vibrant mixed use development, we hope, that does, that's not part of the motion. Whereas the planned GMHS project is generally consistent with the city's zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. And whereas the site plan has all information required for full site plan approval. And whereas, planning commission recognizes that the site plan. whereas, planning commission recognizes that the site plan will be constructed in phases as provided for in Section forty-eight dash eleven thirty-nine, Phase Development of the City Code, with the phases being as follows: Phase One A is the site area as defined by the site plan, excluding the Phase Two area, and only limited site development and pre-construction activities as follows: Construction fencing, site demolition, rough grading, excavation, foundation and footings, and utility work to serve the existing concessions building. And then number two, Phase One B, it will be the site area as defined by the site plan, also excluding Phase Two area, allowing any other construction building activities. Number three, Phase Two includes all work on the Phase Two area of the plans for the trapezoid area and future parking, stormwater, and other related site plan requirements. And whereas the planning commission finds approval of Phase One A, One B, and Two and related waivers will achieve the essential objectives of Division Seven Site Plans, which are in Chapter forty-eight dash eleven thirty-seven, the code, required information in the absence of the particular requirements, which again is also sort of your grammar, again, that's editorial, we can keep it in there. Whereas the requested amendment to Phase One A, the approved site plan and resulting reduction in landscaping would not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety, and/or welfare of the community. And now therefore I move that the planning commission, I move the planning commission approve the site plan amendment for Phase One A, the previously approved site plan for the planned George Mason High School. So moved.
Thank you. Well done. I would love to get a second on this one.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Stevens. Any comments or final questions? Just hopefully straightforward effort. Not seeing anything. Ms. Bazemore, could you call a vote on this, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you. I think that concludes the George Mason High School portion of this meeting. But we have one more action item down to number six D, the South Gate Site Plan Reaffirmation Public Hearing Action. This one's a little bit weird. I think, Paul, you could give us an update on this one.
Yeah, just a quick introduction on this one, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So this is before you for action tonight, and I believe this is, I think this was advertised as a public hearing as well. This is a reaffirmation vote by the planning commission on a site plan application for the South Gate Two project. Planning Commission previously saw this at their, looking through the timing section, at their August fifth meeting. At that time, it was coming that the planning commission is both a site plan application as well as a rezoning application, and the action on the site plan at that time was conditional on the council voting to rezone the property. That vote did happen. Council did make a positive vote to rezone the property. That happened on August tenth, shortly after the planning commission's vote. And in consultation with the city attorney, the attorney recommended that the planning commission vote again because there was an open question, or she was, she found that commission didn't have that authority to approve a site plan, conditional on a future rezoning. So this is scheduled for you all to reaffirm the vote. In communicating with the city attorney, one of the things she did stress is that the planning commission already made a positive vote as a body on this application, and since the only changes to the site plan portion of the application have been to address some of the comments raised by the commission, she said that any change in that vote would have to have a firm justification.
All right, thanks for that. And do we have some brief updates on what those? I know there were a couple of changes based on what we had talked about last time.
Sure. Do you want to hear those from the case planner, the applicant?
I think the case planner could do a pretty...
Sure. Ms. Rusi, do you want to speak to this? Oh, did we lose you?
I'm here, sorry. I was on mute. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. So the planning commission included two conditions. Since Paul sort of went over the background and the August fifth approval, I'll just get straight to the point and talk about the changes. So the planning commission included two conditions in the approved motion on August fifth. First was to include commitments to rooftop solar panels and conduits for E V charging stations in the proffers. Final proffers approved by the city council includes these commitments. The second condition was that the proposed mid-block crossing be relocated on the site plan pursuant to staff recommendation, which was also addressed in the updated final site plan before the commission tonight. The final site plan also includes changes to the previous stormwater design, and that, according to the applicant, is due to construction issues raised by their contractor. Public Works staff has reviewed both the stormwater changes and a new location for the mid-block crossing. They did not have any issues with the, I'm sorry, I got a kid here. Give me one second.
That's fine. It sounds like a lot of activity at your house.
Yeah. If you be quiet, you can sit here, okay?
For which we have a lot of sympathy.
Yeah, this is why I'm not at my house, but that's...
Thank you.
And they always come in right when you're talking. You've been quiet for...
I swear I've been in front of a computer for the past two hours, and they did not come in. It's so true. He said he'll be quiet. So where was I? Oh, my gosh. Yeah, so they, Public Works reviewed the final site plan and the proposed changes. They did not have any issues with the proposed changes, and they've approved the final site plan as amended. So I guess that's all I have is new information since the approval by the planning commission. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them, but the applicant is also in attendance if you have any questions for them.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Rusi. I don't have any questions. The applicant's welcome to chime in, although it probably isn't necessary. But do any, do any planning commissioners have questions for either staff or the applicant? Not seeing any. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, if nobody has questions, I think I'm going to have to ask a question from Paul. Paul, do we, do we go ahead with the vote with that uncertainty?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, I, sorry, there was some email dialogue back and forth, but I don't think it's anything that impacts the planning commission for moving forward tonight.
All right. And, you know, we can always vote on it again. That seems to be the deal of this one, so let's hope not.
Mr. Chair, on that note, the vice of the city attorney is that the vote stays the same. I guess that means the outcome. This wasn't a unanimous vote before. It's unclear to me as commissioner how to vote this time. I don't think things are different to me. I don't know if all the commissioners are here and if the outcome will be different.
Yes, I think Mr. Satter can clarify. My understanding is that if someone were to change their vote, there would have to be a reason. Now, I think if someone voted no before and they wanted to vote yes, now the reason could be that these conditions were met, I guess. I don't know. But not everyone is here that was here. Yeah, I think Ms. Teets voted last time, and I don't actually recall which way she voted, but...
Yeah, and I apologize, I wasn't present for the last meeting to hear the rationale behind the votes. I guess what I would see that that has substantively changed at this point is that the rezoning is no longer before the commission, so I think it would be based solely on the merits of the site plan application itself.
If someone voted no before because they were concerned about rezoning, the rezoning has happened.
Yeah, and the other issue is that, you know, the comments that were raised by the planning commission seem to have been addressed, so I don't know if there were other issues raised as part of that discussion.
I just have a, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe I abstained from the rezoning vote. I'm fairly certain I did. So I think I did.
That's right, Mr. Krasner, you did abstain.
And so I don't know where that leaves me. I mean, I essentially didn't vote, but I don't know where that leaves me for tonight. So I'm just looking for some guidance. Does that mean I'm allowed to vote? Not allowed to vote?
I, my interpretation, what I've heard, which is not a ton, is just that if someone voted differently or decided to vote when they didn't vote before, then they have to give a reason. And obviously, that reason is, I would assume, up to the individual who's giving it.
Yeah, I think, you know, if the group did want to, I think it's always possible if the group was interested to wait until the full body could be present to vote. As you said, that this was something that was not a unanimous action last time. So if it is something that the group wanted to do to move the item to a subsequent meeting, I think that would be allowable.
Allowable, but would that be insanely frustrating for the applicant?
The applicant is here tonight. I don't know if they want to speak to the timing of this.
Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, this is Bob Young here. Can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Yes, I think it might be an understatement that would be exceedingly frustrating to have it moved to a subsequent meeting. Based on discussions with the city attorney, we have been told that we can go ahead with construction, and we're in the process of doing that, and that the planning commission vote basically is to reaffirm her concern is solely that sometime in the future, someone might challenge the fact that the vote was contingent on the rezoning. The rezoning is, was unanimous from the city council, and we are on an extremely tight timeline, not only because of winter, but because of agreements with the church with respect to Christmas parking and things of that nature. I would hope that the planning commission would go ahead tonight and vote. My understanding is commissioners are free to vote however they choose, whether they voted against or for last time around. My clear recollection is Commissioner Teets voted for the project. She's not here tonight.
Yes.
But it seems to me that a reasonable interpretation of the city attorney's position on this is if someone wanted to vote against it, they could, of course, do so, but would need some kind of good reason.
Right. If they had previously voted for it, and now suddenly you guys have met the request that we made before to vote against would be unusual without some sort of explanation.
I think that's a good way to summarize it.
But I get the sense that if someone voted against it, who now is more comfortable with it because the zoning has been done and some changes have been made, I can't imagine that being a problem.
I strongly believe that would not be a problem, and I urge everyone to do that.
All right, and I'm looking at the minutes. Mr. Krasner did abstain, Mr. Puentes and Ms. Weiss voted no. The other four of us were all here and voted yes, but Ms. Teets is not here tonight. So I...
I would hope you go ahead.
I'm inclined to vote on it, but Mr. Satter, did you have, did someone chime in?
No, I, you know, I think this is for the planning commission. You know, it's scheduled as an action item for you all tonight. You know, I, I think, you know, like staff and the applicant have heard from conversations with the attorney, the expectation is that the vote would play out sort of the same way as it did before, understanding, of course, that the action at this point, again, as I said, it's limited to the site plan, which has specific requirements that need to be met. And of course, the staff recommendation on those is positive for the action before you.
All right. I'm inclined to entertain a motion on this, but if anyone has any comments before we do that.
And just to interrupt briefly, this was advertised as a public hearing, so we should check to see if any comments were received.
Will do, will do. I have a guess on that, but anyone have any thoughts before we get a motion?
I'll just, in case there's any concern about, you know, a split vote tonight, I'll just, you know, underline that one of my major concerns last time was procedural. We were being asked to decide on a rezoning application without having had the chance to discuss that in a work session, and that was a shift that I objected to. However, since it is, you know, the rezoning has occurred, and now it's a site plan decision, and I do see that the proffers on E V and solar rooftop, solar panels have been updated. I am inclined to vote for it, so I just wanted to relay any concern about that split vote and not being able to move forward.
All right, I appreciate that information.
Assuming everybody else keeps their votes the same.
Leave you.
Mr. Chair, take a motion that's acceptable.
All right, that'd be great. I would entertain that motion.
All right, regarding Site Plan Number twenty-nineteen dash eleven seventy-seven, motion is as follows: Whereas on August ten, twenty-twenty, the city council adopted T O twenty dash seventeen and amended the official zoning district map of the City of Falls Church by rezoning approximately one-point-seven acres of land to replace the existing proper development conditions while maintaining the B three general business zoning designation for the properties upon sixteen East Fairfax and one-thirty East Fairfax Street. And whereas the final proffer stated August sixth, twenty-twenty, approved by city council on August twentieth, twenty-twenty, incorporates the commitments to rooftop solar panels and conduits for electric vehicle charging stations pursuant to planning commission's conditions included in their site plan approval on August the fifth, twenty-twenty. And whereas the final site plan dated twenty-twenty satisfies the planning commission's approval condition to relocate the proposed crosswalk on East Fairfax Street pursuant to recommendations by the Department of Public Works. I further move the planning commission reaffirms its August fifth, twenty-twenty approval, Site Plan Application Number twenty-nineteen dash eleven seventeen as amended in final site plan dated August thirteen, twenty-twenty, and Attachment One.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anyone up for a second?
I can second it.
Second from Mr. Wadiska. Ms. Bazemore, can you confirm that we do not have any public comment on this? I wonder when in these days we're going to get a public comment. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any comments before we take a vote?
Just one, just Mr. Chairman, just a comment, since I, I mean, I just wanted, since I abstained last time on the rezoning, I'll vote on this tonight. It's a different animal. It's a site plan. So it's like, I think, I think when we first heard the site plan way back when, whenever that was, I think I voted for that. So again, I view a site plan in the context of what a site plan is, and so I will vote in contrast to my abstention last time. Just wanted to put that on the record.
Sounds reasonable. It is a simpler issue at hand today. All right, with that, Ms. Bazemore, could you call a vote, please? Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We got through the action items on the agenda. A little bit behind schedule, that's okay. All right, we are moving on to item number seven A, Planning Commissioners Reports. Does anyone have any reports to give?
Yeah, this is Tim. I was going to mention regarding the E D A, they've taken up a project regarding weight binding signs and have proposed a set of signage that would run in the range of four-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollars. And the question of financing came up as to whether it should come out of the operating budget or the C I P. That's still somewhat up in the air. And the question of financing came up as to whether it should come out of the operating budget or the CIP. Uh, that's still somewhat up in the air, but, uh, the CIP would li- likely be a good venue for it, so that's something that we may want to, uh, consider taking up, uh, when we first, uh, address the CIP, I believe, next month.
Well, we have a little bit of a work session on CIP tonight, so maybe it'll even come up tonight, but that's a good update. We just have a CIP update tonight and I think we could throw that out, out there as something that we might want to look at when they work up next year's CIP, which is, I think, next month. Any other reports from commissioners? None? All right, we did have some, have some pieces of correspondence that I reviewed, they all, I think one way or another, were related to the Broad and Washington Insight Project, which has yet to be referred to us. If anyone wants to talk about them, let me know, otherwise, like I said, I did, I did look at them.
I think there was one on Falls Green, which I had to look up what that was.
Yeah, and I think the origins of that actually had to do with the property management and the connection to the Insight Project, I think, that's why I think it was tangentially related. Um, but, all right. Director of Support, Mr. Stotter, do you have something? I know you shared a document in the packet.
Uh, yes, uh, and given the time of night, uh, I will try to keep my, my report, uh, my, my verbal report brief here. Um, so we have gotten back on track as a planning shop with publishing our quarterly, uh, progress reports, uh, that, that accounts for not only what occurred in the previous few months, but also what we're looking forward to in the, in the coming quarter. Uh, just highlights to, to note here that, uh, uh, construction activity continues, um, highlighted there on page two of the report, um, uh, the new high school well under construction, uh, Founder's Row well under construction, uh, and, uh, the library under construction. Uh, it is of course, an exciting time in the city, uh, these buildings that were first constructed, uh, you know, in the era when the city first became a city, uh, are due for renovation and it's happening is, as well as, uh, the redevelopment of the commercial corridors. Uh, staff is continuing to work mostly, uh, remote. Um, the planning, the, the, the cap within, the recommended cap within, uh, sort of city hall wide is no more than 30% of staff, uh, onsite, uh, at city hall at any given time. Um, planning staff is, is way ahead of that goal, uh, we generally have 0% staff, uh, onsite. Um, within the department, the permit counter is of course, uh, staff during regular business hours, uh, and we're trying to keep that to one or two people, uh, so that we can provide in-person customer service, but also, uh, keep the staff and the customers safe. Um, let's see, other things to highlight, uh, two conferences coming up, uh, and this is just a reminder per the, uh, planning commission's rules of procedures, uh, the, the expectation is, is that all commissioners will attend at least one training, uh, uh, once every, every three, uh, once for every three-year term. Um, so, uh, they're actually being held at the same time this year, uh, which means, uh, it will be challenging to, to do both, except that they're both remote, so you could catch one session, uh, at, at one conference and, and flip your computer over and catch a different one. Uh, Virginia Chapter, the American Planning Association, uh, their annual meeting's going to be October 12th through 16th, uh, and the ULI Fall Meeting, Urban Land Institute's Fall Meeting will be held, uh, October 13th through 15th. Um, and as a reminder, um, uh, department funds are available, uh, to reimburse planning commissioners for, uh, any and all of these meetings.
Yeah, I was going to ask if someone's interested in going, do they, should they coordinate with, 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 um, Ms. Bazemore or somebody? I noticed like the APA one is particularly inexpensive for planning commissioners.
Yes, uh, yeah, that can all be coordinated, uh, Emily's been a big help, uh, Ms. Bazemore's been a big help, um, getting the paperwork through city hall. Um, uh, whatever help you need, uh, yes, send it to, to Ms. Bazemore, copy me, um, and, and we'll, uh, work it through off the city side. Uh, usually it's, um, a combination of, of submitting, uh, receipts, um, um, and any expenditures, uh, that were incurred along the way.
All right. Sounds good, anyone have any questions for the planning director?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Young, I wonder if I could interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
I think it's worth mentioning that, um, the association, the Virginia Planning Association, uh, in the last couple of days awarded the city, uh, an award for the cottages project, um, Railroad Cottages, uh, as the best project in the state for last year. Uh, and I think staff ought to get a big round of applause for that one, thank you.
That's great news and, uh, congratulations to you too, Bob, that's, uh, exciting to hear. I want to see that in some, uh, you know, PR, put out a press release, come on.
And I know that this is not the, the first award, um, that was granted for Railroad Cottages, Urban Land Institute also recognized it for its housing excellence, uh, awarded its, um, I think at its previous spring meeting. And I think one of the things that captured the attention of, of both those groups, APA and ULI, is that the cottage housing project, uh, took on, I think, those challenges that, that the speaker was talking about, um, Dr. Schutz was talking about earlier tonight, that idea of, of how do you work that idea of gentle density, um, into existing neighborhoods, uh, right? The buy right option was for single-family houses, um, that probably would have been on the market, close to, to $1.4 million, and instead what went in, um, and, and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think it was 10 units, um, you know, that were probably in that sort of $700,000 to $800,000 range.
That's correct, Paul.
So, so, thank you. Um, so not what people would generally consider affordable, um, but it is 10 units, um, that were available to a, a, a different market. Um, and, and I don't know where all the buyers came from, you know, were they, were they residents in the city that were looking to downsize, um, or looking to maybe cash out some of the equity, um, in their existing homes, but, but find a way to stay inside the community, so it's, you know, some of it is providing options.
Um, if I can just address that for a minute, it's interesting to note, um, that only one of the 10 came from within the city. All of the others, of all the others, I believe that either seven or eight of the nine came here for one reason, and that's because of grandchildren. So they, they came from, um, a couple from out of state, um, and I think three perhaps from Montgomery County and the others from Arlington or Fairfax. So, uh, obviously there are no children since it's senior restricted. I do want to say that, uh, the community's been under operation for about a year and the way that they are operating, and I, and I will just say informally, caring for one another in this kind of environment, obviously totally unexpected, um, when, when these were designed and built, uh, has been truly heartwarming. Uh, this is a community that cares for one another, uh, helps one another. Um, you can imagine the isolation that some of these residents who live alone would be feeling if they didn't have this community. So I think it's, I believe it to be a tremendous success, um, in kind of every respect. Um, the, this award was given to the staff, to Paul and his staff, by the planning, uh, folks because, uh, the work that they had to do to get the code, uh, amended, to get this project approved and so on. So I want to thank Paul and his staff, um, especially Carly and the folks who worked on that project. Sorry to take your time.
No, that's all right, thank you for highlighting that. It's great to hear, all around. Um, all right, well, I think that concludes the public hearing part of our meeting, we do have two, hopefully not too long, work session items, um, that we can move to now. Um, the first one being a subdivision at 606 East Columbia Street, which I assume we'll get a presentation on, I'm hoping this one will be, uh, relatively straightforward, it's, there aren't any weird shapes, there aren't any strange, uh, pipe stems or anything like that, it looks like, uh, a very straightforward subdivision.
Uh, yes, Chair, the, um, if I could, just by way of brief introduction, this is before you, was a work session item tonight, so no action is expected. Um, uh, this is the commission's first look at a proposed, uh, subdivision from one lot to two at, at 606 East Columbia Street. Um, and I'm going to leave the, the presentation for, uh, the case planner, uh, Ms. Bazemore. Um, the, I just want to highlight that the, the recommended action from, from staff tonight is, is for, uh, planning commission to review the application, staff's analysis of it, uh, and then to, uh, go ahead and schedule this for public hearing and final action, uh, at the commission's October 7th, uh, meeting, which is your next meeting.
Sounds good. Bazemore, you want to take it away? All right, thank you. And just, well, because I think it's very brief, the only sort of thing here is that bump out, that's a bump out, that way to extend into North Van Buren from the proposed site, is that right? It, it would reduce the cross, across North Van Buren. Got it. All right, um, did Mr. Gary's want to? Do you have any information, it seems straightforward.
Hey there, uh, Cameron Garis, planner. Um, yeah, as you said, um, it's fairly simple, but I can outline it. Um, the proposal is on the southwest corner there that the bump out reduces the crossing across the Van Buren about five feet. Um, as we know, through neighborhood trapping, coddling, uh, techniques, that decreasing the crossing makes it safer, makes turning slower for cars, um, lets pedestrians be seen, uh, more visible. Uh, also right now, if you look at the picture, my memo to the left, there, there's not much room to get around a telephone pole, so part of that is also to create a, uh, proper ramp there, um, in addition to, uh, safety and assured crossing. And to, uh, another reason this is a good opportunity is in April of this year, um, we were able to complete just 40 feet to the east of the site, um, a improved intersection crossing, um, that's, uh, going across that had a small bump out, but also was there to, um, create better visibility because of an obstructed, uh, telephone pole. So this is kind of the, the last piece of the puzzle to create this safer intersection, um, and, uh, just expanding upon pedestrian improvements in the area.
All right. Thanks for those details. We should make, uh, telephone poles in sidewalks illegal. Um, all right, do, does anyone have any question for, I'm going to let commissioners ask questions of staff and then, uh, that will probably trickle over to some clarifications from the applicant, if that sounds all right. I see Mr. Puentes is unmuted.
Just quickly, there, so in the attachments, there was a, a, um, a study from Tool Design, I think the city asked Tool to, to look at this, and there's some recommendations, can you just confirm that the recommendations that are in that report are in the, uh, in the site, the proposed site plan? Or gonna be?
Yeah, I mean, this is the subdivision.
Right.
All right. Mr. Stevens, I see you're unmuted, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question, uh, but before that, I just wanted to share very briefly that there's actually a little bit of history to this house. Uh, some of you that, if you're my age, will remember a program, uh, Mutual of Omaha's Wild Kingdom, and the host of that, uh, program was Jim Fowler.
Jim Fowler?
Yes.
That's him? Oh, man.
And, uh, according to, uh, a documentary that was put together by Dave Eckert, and it's on the BIPUS website, uh, has the name Reviving an Urban Stream, first five minutes or so of that, uh, features Jim Fowler, talking about his, uh, childhood and his, uh, appreciation of four-mile run and so forth, so, uh, but even though the house today, and I walked the site today, it's in very poor condition, uh, as is the site generally, uh, and renovation, I, you know, certainly seems warranted. Nonetheless, uh, hopefully it, the, this history, uh, isn't totally lost. Uh, the question I have is the orientation of the two, uh, proposed lots is towards the Van Buren side, whereas the house today, uh, opens towards, um, East Columbia. And, uh, just wondering if there was any particular rationale that could be shared by the developers to, for that orientation?
Good question. Scott?
Yes, hello, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, thank you, great question. So, yeah, the, the logic there, um, stemmed, um, from the setback requirements on the corner lot being 30 feet. Um, and the, the, the overall lot dimensions or the, the street frontages on North Van Buren were, um, uh, significantly more and therefore, um, it, it just allowed for the better, more, rather more flexibility in the proposed buildings themselves and the, the widths. Um, we, we had contemplated facing them on East Columbia Street as they are today. Um, there's also issues with, with. with that and the fact that there is a, you know, an odd interchange there with a three-way stop sign, and the proposed locations of a new access point there would further complicate and arguably, you know, perhaps make even less safe. So it just seemed to be inclined in a subdivision opportunity to face the new homes off of North Columbia.
Okay. Hopefully, the architecture of that house that's parallel to East Columbia will, you know, not cause too much undue attraction there or seem out of place. And then just the only other comment I had, I think that telephone pole is a real problem there. So I think having that bump out and so forth is a very good idea. And that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Anyone else have any questions of staff or the applicant? Mr. Wadiska?
Yeah, really quick. I didn't see any comment from the public. That's sort of unusual for subdivisions. Did I miss that or did we not receive any of this?
And are we going to, I know in a recent meeting, we discussed different ways to get the neighbors' attention, like signs on site and stuff like that. Are we going to try any of those in this case? All right. But we are going to send out the letters before the public hearing. So I suspect we'll get some comments.
All I want to know. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wise?
I'm sorry if I missed this, but I was just looking at the Tool recommendations, and S1 is to coordinate with the utility company to relocate the utility guy wire. And I know the question has already been asked if those recommendations were already incorporated, and we've already commented on that poll, but will that utility guy wire be relocated at the corner of Columbia and Van Buren?
So just to clarify, and the applicant may want to chime in as well, but it looks like the Tool design recommendations are talking about the north leg of North Van Buren, the one that leads you to Crossman Park, and the applicant's property and the curb extension we're talking about would actually be for this.
I see. No, I misread it. I can see that now on the map.
Yeah. And the ramp work and the newly striped crosswalk were installed as a public project recently. And so I think the idea here is that subdivision code does provide for sidewalk construction. And I think the situation here is that there is a deficient sidewalk. And so it's, right, most of the frontage is taken care of. It's this piece at the corner that's missing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. That study is sort of was unrelated to this subdivision, but because it's adjacent, I guess, I think that's where we're getting the.
Yeah, it got pulled up in the case files when we started doing research for the lot.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? This is just a work session, so we don't take any action. But if we have any requests or comments for the applicant, now would be the time to do it so that they can take those into account before the public hearing. Doesn't sound like we have any. I support the staff's request on that bump out. Seems good to me. All right. I think that's that. And now our final item.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Just to follow up on your earlier comment on the conversation we had recently on public notice.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful to hear from staff what next steps are there, because I'm sure the neighbors will have a lot to say once they are made aware of this. So it would be good to know what next steps are in terms of increasing the notice that we give home honor.
Yeah, so that is a good question. So we talked about it at a previous meeting. Sounds like you haven't considered it for this particular subdivision. But what is the, when will you guys decide what the, any adjustments might be made to the public notice process?
We, as staff, we did speak briefly about it immediately following the Planning Commission discussion, and we talked about some options. And I think staff was of the opinion generally that I think yard signs were probably going to be sort of the most feasible first step, that signs are something that people understand. And whether we decided to do them in-house or maybe work with the applicants to have them run on there and posted on their property, that's something that's done in adjoining jurisdictions. And so I think, you know, we started thinking about it, and then we got a little wrapped up in just sort of processing the applications we had in front of us. But I think that's probably something we ought to think about maybe for a subsequent application. This one was sort of already in as we were thinking about noticing options. So I think it's probably something we might start as sort of a trial run with a yard sign or two, maybe along the frontages with the next application that comes in. And it'll probably be a brief conversation with the applicant about sort of how they would like to handle that, whether they want to go ahead and just run the signs themselves, or whether we can sort of lift a template maybe that another jurisdiction already has.
All right. I look forward to seeing that on the next subdivision. I think that'd be great. Like, this is a good example. We're not going to hear from the public until we're taking action on this. I mean, this one seems straightforward, so I don't, I'm not too worried about it. But, you know, ideally, we would hear more earlier so that if there is a, you know, some action to be taken, we have time to do it without having to have the applicant come back. But that goes to timing in addition to technique.
Yeah, I think there's always an interest in getting something that's more effective in terms of getting people sort of aware of the application, you know, when it's around at the work session stage, that that's when it's, you know, best for the commission to be informed about, you know, what the neighborhood's thinking, as well as sort of the lowest cost for the applicant in terms of modifying something early versus late. It's also a time for any sort of required legal research of sort of, you know, is what's being requested or thought of even required under the subdivision code. It's easier to deal with all of that earlier than later. The other things that it may be an opportunity to be more efficient, that certainly the Apon letters are nice because they, you know, it's a fairly certain way to get the word out. But it may not be, you know, the best way of noticing the most number of people.
Just one last follow-up on that. I didn't see public notice change in the work plan and the director's report, so that might be something worth including in the work plan just to make sure we track it.
Yeah, we can get that added.
That'd be great. Thanks.
All right. I think we're done with this. We're on to item 8B CIP snapshot update, which I assume has Ms. Mester's involvement. Somehow, I can't believe she's stuck with us all this time just to get to this final item, but I appreciate that.
I will turn this right over to Ms. Mester.
Who's muted if she's talking, or maybe she stepped away? I know it's been a long meeting.
She's here. She just forgot. She turned the camera on and forgot to unmute herself.
Been there, done that.
Maybe the best way to hear me, but not as effective for the public. Thank you, Mr. Stoddard, for turning over the meeting to me, and Chair and Commission for the opportunity to brief you. Do have a lot of stuff, but it's not intended to be all tonight, and it is an information item. I do want to note, I'm joined by Kaitlyn Subsby, who will do some of the presentation with me. She is our CIP manager and very integral to the development of the CIP and has been joining me at the commission meetings when we're talking CIP, and she'll do a portion of tonight's presentation. You have three items in your packet. One is a cover memo. One is the actual snapshot that we routinely update. And the third is the document that actually was generated at the request of the Planning Commission to provide action report and updates on changes as the CIP evolves. And that's the piece that Kaitlyn will kindly provide you an update on this evening. A quick few highlights from the memo. I'm mostly going to focus on the snapshot. I do want to note that we're before you tonight because during the Planning Commission's review of the CIP, you did request for more regular updates. And I think that's very helpful and be effective instead of just showing up annually with timed update the next six-year plan. So that's why we have the snapshot before you tonight and the updated CIP actions. I also am interested in any input that you would have on specific projects that you might like a fuller discussion on, either by topic of facilities or transportation or just targeted one. And then if there's any thoughts at this preliminary stage for Planning Commission process for the next CIP process, would welcome that input. Staff will be starting to update that early this fall, basically in a month. It is and continues to be challenging because of COVID and revenue, but we will be starting that process because we do need to document the need and do a planning exercise. And so between the fall and presentation to the commission in February, if there's some additional steps or process that you would like us to develop with the Planning Director, I'd be glad to do that. The cover memo does include a general timeline for the next CIP development. The snapshot is in the same format as you've seen previously in the CIP and that we at least email to you whenever it's provided to council. And it outlines our success of projects. And we are, even though we're in COVID, remote work, we are still progressing quite well on CIP projects, doing field work, doing virtual meetings. And that's been a positive during these challenging times. And I do want to credit staff for thinking out of the box and helping us progress in that way while staying safe, while staying safe with our community and contractors. But we've also been able to keep businesses and contractors active. One thing I wanted to highlight before I move into the specific projects is the challenges we are having at the state level with revenue funding in its entirety, but specifically for transportation. In April, when the General Assembly reconvened to reduce the budget due to COVID, they put a year extension on the six-year improvement plan, the SIP, that funds our transportation money that's coming through the state. And they have a full year before they have to adopt an update. So a lot of our grant applications that we submitted are pending. They haven't been awarded. So you'll see some notes in the snapshot where things are on hold pending that resolution. Just yesterday, the Secretary of Finance gave another update to the General Assembly on revenues. They're still short. There's still gaps. It's not as bad as been projected. But we probably won't know if any of these transportation projects will be funded till the next revenue forecast, which will be end of this year as we go into the next General Assembly session. Additionally, because there's still gaps in loss of revenue, there is a budget amendment before the General Assembly right now during the special session to actually give the CTV flexibility to realign already awarded funding to projects, to realign it to current year projects if the construction or the full execution is in out years. So if you're not going to go to construction until FY '24, the CTV would have flexibility to move that money from Project A to Project B that could proceed with the goal of keeping current projects moving now. We have done a lengthy conversation with the Governor's Administration Office, which included the Deputy Secretary of Transportation and a lead staff at Central Office of VDOT. And we have minimal impact on city current projects. So that was really good news. And the one that might have gotten delayed, we made a good case for, and they're looking at how they could still keep it funded and make an exception for us. So while it's challenging, I think in that front, this current legislation will have minimal impact on our projects. Just a few highlights on the snapshot that's up on the screen for you. It's still in the traffic signal mode of green, yellow, or red, with blue being our fourth color to celebrate things that are completed. Big chimneys on page one. I did want to highlight that it is an active construction project. And if you've gone by, you will have seen land disturbance for the stormwater. Now they're getting ready to do concrete pours and then, you know, moving into the playground with the goal of finishing it mid-October. That said, this recent rain has not been too friendly on us for concrete pours and stuff. So it is not behind schedule yet, but it is nip and tuck. And so we're hoping for a break in weather. The library renovation and expansion project is proceeding to date on schedule and on budget. The Library Board of Trustees did have a recent hard hat tour to get an update on that. And we get regular reports from the project manager on that project. Rain there is also causing a challenge and has delayed some of the pours for some of the foundation piers and elevator shafts. And so we're also having to monitor that very quickly, carefully, in hopes that we will get a break in the weather there. Under Stormwater and Sanitary Sewer, we are working on Ren's Branch as well as Poplar, Laura, and Midville. These are using existing funding resources to move those stormwater projects forward. Next week, at council's work session, the stormwater team will be providing an update on the stormwater task force projects, how we can proceed with those, and how it impacts the rate study. Those were impacted with the revenue impact and the city's revision to our budget, where we put a lot of new initiatives on hold. We also delayed issuing debt until this fall in order to see how our revenue and expenses are playing out from COVID. So next week during the work session, we'll have a specific stormwater presentation and update. And then the following work session, October 5, will be an update on the city's financial conditions and how we are planning to proceed with stormwater as well as other projects related to debt issuance, which does impact fire station and some of our other projects. So we'll have more information that I can share with the commission in terms of stormwater over the next two council meetings. Fire Station 6 for the bay door replacements is on hold because they were fully debt-funded. On Park Avenue, Great Streets, we actually have some good news and that we did receive the MBTA award of $8.3 million for that grant, which was what was needed to fully fund this project. And this would pair with Park Avenue, Great Streets, and also a downtown section. So we can, Underground Utilities, because no Dominion poles should not be in our sidewalks. I totally agree with you. That's a longtime history that we've inherited because mostly the poles were there, and then we put sidewalks around them. Would not happen in a new case. But we are looking to, with these grants, to at least correct a very important part of our pedestrian walkability and parallel paths to Broad Street. So that was some positive news. And we're looking right now, working with Public Works on how to staff the project manager and be able to proceed now with that project. Also exciting news, the South Washington Transit Plaza and Streetscape is actually under construction. So rain, a little bit of delay there too, but they've mobilized and they're starting to do the construction part of that project. South Washington and South Maple, we've worked to resolve some funding gaps and have had some good follow-up coordination with Fairfax County for that intersection. And we're working on the procurement parts of that now. South Maple Avenue Roadbed Reconstruction, I did want to just flag that because you'll see it's an open circle. see it's an open circle, no color. And that's because we actually de-allocated the funding for that CIP upon further engineering and soil testing by Public Works. It was determined we did not need to do that project. The local money that matched that went to the South Maple, South Washington intersection to fill the gap. The other money did go back to the state, but that also is giving us some goodwill to work with the state to not lose funding on our current projects as we go through the COVID revenue shortfall. Just a couple more projects to highlight. The WOD Park and Greenway Project Stool Trails has started by WOD. The staff are working closely with Nova Parks to coordinate communication with the neighbors and the community on that as they start the work there. And staff are continuing to work on the designs and the budget pieces related to trail crossings. So good progress there. The West Falls Church Joint Campus project, the 15.7 million is progressing nicely. The sewer parts done, which was another CIP project, and the undergrounding is done, and a lot of the work is continuing on schedule there. And we also got good news from MBTA that we got 6.9 million for the West Falls Church Access to Transit Multimodal Connectivity Project, which we in short term call the Shreve Road WOD Project. And that's a very important pedestrian access and safety project that will be coordinated between the city, Fairfax County, and VDOT in conjunction with the study that VDOT is currently doing right now. And so Chair, if I may, I'll just ask Caitlin to update you on the action report that's in your packet as the final attachment. And then we look forward to questions and comments and input.
Sounds good. Thank you. Caitlin, take it away.
Thank you. Thanks, Cindy, for the introduction. I'm Caitlin Sobbsy, CIP Grants Manager, and I'm presenting the revised FY21/26 CIP Action Report, which I believe was presented to you initially in February when we were here last. But this revision reflects changes made since the adoption of the FY21 CIP. It may seem like sort of a lot of changes since we just adopted the final CIP in June. But as Cindy mentioned earlier, the CIP process really starts in November or December. And then we have a bunch of revisions, you know, internally with staff before it's presented to Planning Commission and Council, at which point we can't make any changes to the CIP. So this is sort of, maybe it's easier to think of this as sort of a recap of everything that has happened, sort of behind the scenes during the budget process. So some of these changes are actual budget amendments that have been adopted by Council, and some are just proposed changes made by staff and will not be adopted until the FY22 CIP budget process, which, like Cindy said, we are starting next month. So CIP all year long. First, we have, first on the action report, we have a couple of projects completed. Northwest pedestrian improvements, made safety improvements to the crossings along Northwest Street at Oak, Highland, and Greenwich, and to provide access to sidewalks or bus stops. That was a locally funded project. Traffic Signal Timing, that's a programmatic project to upgrade traffic signal equipment and software. The city plans to reapply for more funds. This is just sort of the completion of one of those grants that we received for that program. And Primary Extensions, the third is paving project that repaved segments of East Broad and Hillwood Avenue. There were two projects, and Cindy talked about this some as well. There were two projects that were removed or de-allocated. One was the South Maple Roadbed Reconstruction, which was determined, did not need a reconstruction. So the VDOT grant funds were de-allocated and returned to VDOT, and then local funds were reprogrammed. Also, we had one of the paving segments that I just mentioned in the Primary Extensions project that was actually included in the scope of another project. So we were able to de-allocate that. Both of these, de-allocations aren't super typical. We generally try to hold on to funds instead of returning them. So, but I think, like Cindy said, I think this is really a reflection of the city's response to COVID and, you know, trying to be more conservative and prioritize funding as it will become more limited. A few projects delayed. South Maple and South Washington intersection, there was a delay due to funding. There were some right-of-way delays, and that created a funding deficit. And so that was delayed while we were identifying funds. Some of those funds were from the South Maple Roadbed Reconstruction Project that was de-allocated in the budget amendment. Then we have three possible delays that Cindy covered. Those are all due to this sort of uncertain status of the Six-Year Improvement Program or basically the state's transportation budget. If you go to the second page, we have funds reprogrammed. For various reasons, these funds have been reprogrammed or transferred from one program in the CIP to another or one project to another. That happens for a couple of different reasons. I won't go over every single one of these transfers, but I can answer questions on these. Some of them we've already sort of talked about or Cindy has covered. But I'll just summarize it by saying, you know, several of these transfers move funds from completed projects or closed projects with surplus funds to active projects which have funding needs. What's, a couple of new grants and grant applications submitted. The applications in orange that you see under grant applications have been funded or preliminarily funded, again, due to sort of that uncertain status that will be determined by, you know, COVID impacts. One new application was submitted for $6.1 million. That was for the South Washington Bus Stop Expansion and Access to Transit. That is, those are multimodal improvements and new bus shelters along South Washington Corridor in sort of the Greenway Downs, what's referred to as the Greenway Downs neighborhood or area of that corridor, on both Fairfax County and Falls Church side. So we've been coordinating with Fairfax County. We've submitted the application to VDOT. It's being reviewed right now for $6.1 million. And it was, this was a new project that was added in the last CIP Action Report and adopted in the FY21 CIP. But the estimated cost did increase, and that will be updated in the FY22 CIP budget. I believe that the initial estimate in our FY21 CIP, it was significantly less than $6.1 million. It was maybe like $1.5 million. So that will be updated in the next, in the next CIP process. And I think, oh, and projects added. I'm sorry. We have Bike Share Phase 2, which we've added. And this is, again, one of those things that is just staff recommended. This is not adopted in the CIP yet. But Bike Share Phase 2 is a project that we'll be adding to the multimodal program, and that will just be a continuation of the successful Bike Share Phase 1. And Streetlight LED Conversion, I know that we presented a lot of information on the streetlight conversion to Planning Commission earlier this year, and that is part, that's a project that is being added to the new sidewalks and streetlights program that was added in FY21 CIP. So I think that concludes this. If anyone has any questions for me or if Cindy wants to add anything to that.
Thank you for that update. Very thorough.
And Chair, if I could, just to wrap that, I do want to note that this action report is really a great one that you all asked for because it is a year-round CIP, and a lot of things happen budget-wise. And it seems like a lot, but a lot of it is normal accounting. Because if we close out a grant, we're going to move the money. Some things like de-allocation happen. But also, hopefully, we'll see less over time. We've had a lot of projects that have gaps in funding because of construction cost escalation. But then also, early on, our grants did not have good contingency and inflation built in, and we're now using the, also increased VDOT standards so that we are better covered. Because all of these grants, as you can see, a lot of them are FY24, 25, 26, and, you know, totally different than today's funding. And I did want to note, I neglected to mention on October 5th, we're also putting together a full NTC Neighborhood Traffic Comm-ing update. And so I'll make sure all these updates that we give to Council will also get transmitted to the Planning Commission via Paul. We've made a lot of progress during this time, also working with the community on light solutions. $350,000 of the NTC money is also on hold because of COVID budget limitations. But we have been trying to work light solutions until we can get back to heavier construction. So thank you, Chair. And as I said, look forward to questions or input for future CIP process.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, hopefully we'll have fewer pandemics to deal with in the future as well. But, but yeah, details on neighborhood traffic calming would be great. I'm sure we all, that's probably one of the main things our neighbors ask us about. So it's always good to have updates on that. Does anyone have any questions while we're here? I see Mr. Stevens unmuted.
Yeah. First of all, the reports are helpful. So thanks for putting all this together. Just given the late hour, a real quick question on the streetlight conversion project. Do you know when that will start?
We have had our internal meeting to assign the project manager. We're currently working to schedule a site visit to look at different light colors, temperatures, and so forth. With that, we'll be staff, and we will reach out and ask for Planning Commission EAC reps so we can answer community engagement. So once we get through all of that and then work with Dominion, I think we would start seeing an active project mid to late fall. Some of it Dominion may have in stock and can start. Some of it they may need to lead order and then start installing. So we'll be able to give you a better detail, but we're at the early stages of executing.
Actually, I said one question, but real quickly, since this is a follow-up from something that came up earlier, has there been any discussion on the wayfinding signs as to whether or not that would be a possible new addition to the upcoming CIP?
We are having internal discussions. I think it's a timing question. Since it's over 150,000 and a greater life cycle than five years, it would be CIP eligible. It doesn't have to be in the CIP. So the discussion is, is there a way to put in the operating budget simply because we could do it sooner than later than the CIP process? So right now, the initial thing is to find the funding that would complement the EDA's commitment, and then we can figure out what's the proper source. If we did it in the normal CIP process, the money wouldn't be available till next July for the wayfinding signs. And I think there's an interest to do it sooner.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking that, Mr. Stevens. I actually, earlier, that reminded me that I want to make sure to coordinate with the EDA about, you know, the location of those signs because obviously we have a lot of grant funds available, and we can include wayfinding in a lot of our grant-funded projects. So if we can use, you know, if we can utilize grant funds to fund any of those, any of the wayfinding needs that we have, that would be great. So I'm going to see if I can touch base with them. Thanks.
Brands are good.
Yes.
All right. Thanks for that, Mr. Stevens. Any other CIP related questions, Ms. Weiss?
Yeah, just a quick question. Can you tell us a little bit about the BRT pilot that was, and the funding that was not awarded, what led to that outcome?
Which one was that? I'm sorry.
That's commuter choice, Cindy.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, so that, the commuter choice grant was to establish a 28X bus route or reestablish it that would do a connection between the two metro stations and through our corridor. And it would be the pilot to the future bus rapid transit concept. It wasn't funded this time solely due to revenue shortfalls from MBTC. MBTC is funded through the toll revenue on I-66 inside and outside the Beltway. And of course, with COVID and remote work, the tolls are significantly down. And so they had limited money. And in fact, the amount of money they had to award wouldn't even fully fund our grant application. It did rank high. And so the plan from MBTC is that they did award current grants with the money they have. They are not starting any new services. So that was the other challenge. This would be a new service through WAMADA. So they're going to do a second tranche of awards, but not a new competition, once they see what the revenue looks like next year. And we will be number one in that queue, which would be good for funding. Also, hopefully, WAMADA will have stabilized because their ridership is so low, they're not operating a lot of their services, and they're not in a position to start a new service. So hopefully, the timing will then realign for COVID and WAMADA operations. In the short term, we are working to keep the 3T, which is a current grant-funded project, past December 30th, which was when it was scheduled to end. And that basically will keep what the 28X would have done, the core of it, not the exact route, but the core of it still operational. 3T is not operating right now, and so we can't draw down the grant funds. And so the funding is still there. And so we're working with MBTC to extend the grant. So we're trying to still have the transit service, but the COVID impact on revenues is the reason why the grant wasn't awarded this round. But we are optimistic for it to be funded when things stabilize.
Great. Thank you.
It was actually one of their top-scoring competitive grants. Just caught bad timing.
Wow, that's too bad. Well, that's good to know. We're first in line for the next, when it becomes viable again.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many people are taking the bus right now, anyway.
Fortunately, bus is picking up. It's picking up faster than rail, but it is still not where it was pre-COVID, for sure.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
I just wanted to add something. This, the format of the action report, that was something that we created during the FY21 CIP process and the, you know, seeking recommendation from Planning Commission. I really like this report. So I appreciate you guys asking me for it, and I plan to use it in the future. I just want to make sure that, you know, this format works for you, that it's helpful, that it captures all the information you need, and, you know, that we'll continue using this going forward in future updates.
I like it.
Okay.
To get the information across. But if anyone looks at it and has ideas, I'll tell them to send those ideas to you.
Thank you.
All right. If we don't have anything else, we're 11 minutes away from our deadline, anyway. Maybe we can wrap this up. Sound good. Appreciate everybody sticking with it pretty late, and hopefully we'll all get to see each other in person someday. Probably not, but, you know.
Eventually.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody. That's the end of the meeting. Good evening.